I'd like to ask everybody to stand. We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. John Betts is going to lead us in the word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we are, again, we are truly grateful for the day that you have given each of us to live. We pray in this day, Lord, that we have lived according to the way that you have asked us to, that we have, with our lives, we have brought glory to you. We pray, Lord, that if we did not, that you'll forgive us and that tomorrow give us grace to live as we should. We thank you for bringing us to this place. I pray, Lord, for wisdom and knowledge to make correct decisions. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome everybody here. It's a good crowd. It's good to see you out. Please come back all the time, every month that comes to our meeting. We'd love for you to show up. I'm going to ask our clerk, Jay LaShawna, if he would do roll call.
Town of Vidalia, Board of Alderman, roll call for regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman by date of February 12, 2019. Alderman Betts?
Present.
Alderman Doray?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman McCoy?
Present.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Mayor of Ormond, Gordon, is present.
Okay. All right, before you, you have the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any questions on the minutes?
I make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Dory. Is here second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. First on our agenda is going to be the review of the financial states by our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke.
The financials for tonight's meeting have been distributed to the Alderman and to the department heads. They include the balance sheet as of December 31, 2018, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the six months ending December 31, 2018, a budget to actual comparison in summary form by funds, and also a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. The balance sheet as of December 31 showed we had cash of 4.3 million, of which 2.3 million is in the hydro royalty fund. We showed investments of 3.8 million, which increased by 1.5 million due to the CD purchased with the proceeds from the sale of the industrial facilities. We show total assets of 31.2 million, total liabilities of 5.7 million, and a fund balance of 25.5 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the six months ending December 31, 2018 showed combined revenues of 22 million, total expenditures of 19.4 million, and a change in net position of 2.5 million. The town should have approximately 50% remaining in the projected expenses. Overall, we're at the 51% remaining balance level in expenditures and 48% in revenues. The $2.5 million change in net position is due to the sale of the Vidalia industrial facilities in July of this year for $4 million, less the payoff of the line of credit of 2.5 million, plus a decrease in total operating expenses at the present time of 49% and an increase in total revenue of 52%. The town is in good financial position. We are where we should be according to the budget or maybe even a little better than budget. We are maintaining cash flow. The hydro royalty payment made in February for January power purchase was $990,000. With this payment, the royal percentage goes up to 9.2 from 8%, where it was last year. So the royalty associated with just this one invoice will be $1,518,000, which is more than the total royalties we received for the prior quarter. It is, this payment will be received in May of 2019. And also, the LLA, Louisiana Legislative Auditor, has approved the town's audit, and it should be available online for public display. Concludes.
Okay. Any questions for Deborah? Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Okay. Part two on this, this was a quick add to our agenda. We have Wes Gore here. He's with Silas Simmons, who is our independent auditor. And the Legislative Auditor did release the report that these guys performed. And Wes is here to give that report tonight, so.
Good evening. I'm here to deliver your June 30, 2018 audit report, approved by Legislative Auditor yesterday. Mayor, my secretaries weren't real happy when I broke the news to them that they had to produce all these reports by tonight.
I beg for forgiveness.
But they did, and that's the important thing. You've got three documents from Silas Simmons there in front of you. You've got the bound audit report, the audited financial statements. You've got a one-page white sheet that I've entitled "Executive Summary" that I'll use to kind of go through some of the numbers with you. And then you've also got a three-page letter there. And I'm going to start with that three-page letter. What this is, is this is required communication between us as your external auditor and you as the governing body. In our provision, we refer to this as the governance letter. One of the things that we do is we look at your policies and procedures and compare them to prior years and report to you whether or not there were any changes, you know, significant changes in how the town was operating as far as policies and procedures or how they were applying accounting pronouncements. And there were no significant changes from the prior year on any of that. Another thing that we report to you or comment on is to remind you that in your financial statements, there's a number of things that are based on estimates. Some of those estimates are quite significant to your financial statements. And in this letter, we've listed some of those. You know, one of them that had always been probably the most significant estimate was depreciation on the capital assets of the town. And it's still a significant estimate or based on estimates. But it's no longer the biggest estimate that you have in there. The net pension liability, that calculation is based on actuarial assumptions and estimates and is now, you know, the most significant estimate that is in your financial statements. Now, as part of this audit, if we'd encountered any difficulties in conducting our procedures with the audit, if we'd had any disagreements with management, or if we had a disagreement with management and management went out and got a second opinion from another CPA, we're required to report any of that to you if it had occurred. And pleased to report to you that, you know, there were no disagreements with management. You know, your staff here always works real hard to, when we give them a request list for the information we want, they work real hard to get the information to us in a timely manner so we can conduct our audit and get done, you know, with it. If you will, now, look over on page, the white page, please. Like I said, this is entitled "Executive Summary." And basically, I've referenced pages in the report. And instead of trying to flip back and forth in the report, you know, sometimes it's easier just to have one page to work from. Pages one and two of the audited financial statements is Silas Simmons' audit report. As your external auditor, it's our job to conduct an audit, to gather evidence, to be able to give an opinion on your financial statements. It is our opinion that your financial statements, as they're contained in this document, are fairly stated in all material respects at June 30, 2018, and for that fiscal year then ended. Now, there's a number of things contained, you know, throughout these financial statements. That two-page report at the front and the reports, the internal control reports and agreed-upon procedures reports at the back of this document, of the bound document, belong to Silas Simmons. Everything else in between for the town of Vidalia is financial statements. Those belong to you. And like I said, it was our job to give an opinion on them. Contained within there, you can see pages three through nine are the management's discussion and analysis. If you're looking for some comparative numbers between this year and last year, that's a good place to find them. Page 10 is your statement of net position. That's your balance sheet. You can see that your total assets and deferred outflows at June 30 were 69,551,000. Total liabilities and deferred inflows were right at 25 million, leaving a total net position for the town of 44,636,000. Now, I've also listed for you there, as a component of the town's fund balance or equity, the net assets, the town has invested in capital assets right at 46 million, your infrastructure, your equipment, your buildings. Reason I'm pointing that out to you is that number is bigger than the total net assets of 44 million. So that 46 million is not spendable. That's hard assets. So I'll point that out to you to tell you that you need to be working toward getting that back at a positive number. Now, with that said, we've always talked about that pension liability number that kind of craters your net assets at the end of the year when we plug that number in. And then we'll talk a little further about that. As far as how it compares to the prior year, your total assets and deferred outflows were up about 2.5 million. Your total liabilities and deferred inflows were also up about $400,000, leaving you with an increase in net position of $2,151,855. Now, how does that split out among your governmental activities and your business-type activities? Governmental activities being your general fund, some of your special revenue funds, the hydro fund. The net increase in those governmental funds or governmental activities was right at 1.4 million. Your business-type activities, which is primarily your utility funds, increased by $763,219. Now, these are entity-wide, town-wide numbers. So how does that compare to the prior year? And let me just say this about net assets. Net assets, when Gadsby 34, the accounting pronouncement that dictates what your financial statements look like and the whole idea of having net assets, it was all done like that so that over time that you could compare from year to year and that whether, that that change in that assets would be a useful indicator as to whether things were getting better or getting worse. And what I've done is I've given you the last three years there. You can see 2016, town-wide, you had a net loss or a net decrease in net assets of about 740,000. Last year, for all practical purposes, you were break even. You were on the plus side by 25,000. This year, like I said, your net assets increased by about 2.1 million. So obviously, a good trend there to go from a loss to being that much, to break even to now being on the positive side. Also contained in this report on pages 12 through 19 are the fund financial statements. That breaks it down by the individual funds, the utility funds, the general funds, the hydro. So you can go and see, you know, what some of the individual funds and how they perform. Now, one of the things that we always, I always kind of present to you is a little bit of a breakout on how the utility fund did or how the business-type funds did. You can see there, kind of toward the bottom of the page on the right-hand side, in your utility fund, as far as operating income or loss, you can see the electric department and the gas department both had significant operating income. Electric department about 2.2 million, the natural gas about a half million. But you can also see that the water and sewer departments had operating losses. Sewer department about 42,000 and the water department about 440,000. As far as the riverfront development fund, you can see that it still is a drag on your cash flow. It lost, you know, 415,000 this past year. The only positive thing there was that it lost about 515,000 in the prior year. So at least, you know, it's moving in the right direction as far as that's concerned. If you'll turn over to page 62 in the bound document. As your external auditor and part of being able to give an opinion on your financial statements, we have to gain an understanding of the town's internal controls. We're not giving an opinion on the internal controls, but we have to gain enough of an understanding of internal control at the town to be able to give an opinion on the financial statements. And as part of that process, sometimes we run across things that we have to report to, that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards. The report on pages 62 and 63 is that report. We did have a couple of findings for this year. If you'll turn over to page 65. We had two findings. One was a budgetary finding on the sales tax fund. While this is not a specific reoccurring finding, this is something that over the last several years that different funds have been over the 5% and therefore been in noncompliance. So at June, the year ending June 30, 2018, the sales tax fund was over the 5% and therefore noncompliant. The other finding that we had is, that's compliance finding, the other finding that we have is an internal control finding, the Marshals Fund. What we found there, that basically the marshal was handling everything, really wasn't a good situation for him. Really, there needs to be more people involved, a little more segregation of duties. And really, by the time we found this and drafted this report, the town had already taken the steps necessary to start improving the internal control for the Marshall Fund. As far as prior year findings, prior year, there were basically three findings. There was the budget finding on the general fund, which I said, we didn't have a budget finding on the general fund for this year, but we had one on sales tax fund. Last year, there were some issues with some of the compliance documentation on the hydro. Pleased to tell you that that has been resolved and we don't have that finding this time around. The third finding really related to the report that was issued by the Legislative Auditor. It was included in here as one finding, and we addressed it as one finding. Pleased to tell you that the items that were included in the Legislative Auditor's report, if they requested some sort of, you know, work be done to address those, that has been resolved. So pleased to tell you that. As far as, you know, the direction you're heading on the findings, two years ago, we had six. Last year, three, down to two. You know, it'd be nice to get it down to no findings. I'm just going to tell you that's hard to do. So, but the trend is good. You're moving in the right direction. Then the final thing I have for you. If you'll turn over to page 78, which is the last page in there. Last year was the first year that we had this report in your financial statements. And what this is, is this was referred to as the statewide agreed-upon procedures. And this is some procedures that are required by the Legislative Auditor in addition to what we would normally do, you know, on an audit. Most of these deal with policy and procedure and compliance. The Legislative Auditor developed these because these were things that they were seeing statewide that seemed to be a problem everywhere. So they put this together and basically had the internal auditors, I mean, the external auditors start, you know, testing these various areas. Last year, we had eight findings. Pleased to tell you, we've got it down to, it's down to six this time. As far as those findings, they're summarized here on page 78. Your general fund has a negative fund balance. There needs to be a plan in place to address that and to get it unnegative, to get it on the positive side. And I actually believe y'all already tended to that. So I think as of right now, that's no longer the case. As far as the non-payroll dispersments there, actually, on Procedure 9 and Procedure 10, it says one location didn't have proper segregation of duties and one employee was responsible for initiating, approving, and placing a purchase order request for processing and approving payments to vendors and signing checks. The other two locations, there was proper segregation of duties. Actually, number nine and 10 actually relate to the Marshall Fund. So that really relates over to that finding on the internal control report. Procedure 12B, we had a finding that had to do with credit cards or other types of cards that might be used. Not supposed to have any late fees on those. And I think there was one instance in our testing where a late fee was incurred and was paid the following month. As far as payroll and personnel, there were some payments that were made after some deadlines during the year. I believe this primarily related to some retirement payments, but that has been caught up. But I think, you know, at times during the year, maybe some of those were made late. And then finally, as far, Procedure 20 deals with ethics. All the employees are required to take an hour of ethics every year. There was a little bit of discrepancy, not discrepancy, but some timing issues with when some, I think somebody took it just before the year and just after the year, still a finding, you know, because it wasn't within the year. Then also, you know, I think there may have been an issue with, somebody hadn't signed the verification. So. That's all I have for you this evening. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Now, there's a lot of information contained, you know, in those financials and in those notes. And as always, you know, I invite you to, as you're looking through it, if anything, you have any kind of question, please give me a call. I like talking accounting.
Wes, I'd like to thank you for the work y'all did and have done. And I, you know, appreciate, you know, y'all's thoroughness. They're here for, what, almost two months, it seems like, going through everything. We turn over everything to them. And I can tell you that my goal is to get zero findings and for us to just have two from where we've come. I still think we're headed in a great direction and, like you said, trending in the right direction. You know, I'd like to thank you for your work. Again, does anybody have any questions or come across any questions they'd like to ask? Okay. Well, Wes, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Okay. Accounting and license, these are always good to go over. The first one we have is the Cafe and 702 Carter Street. We know it used to be Nicky's. And I think David Parker's here tonight. David, are you here? David, would you like to tell us a little bit about what y'all are doing and what you?
Well, we're, first of all, back in the park, this is called Tish. We're just totally redoing this side of the building, trying to go with the same old southern home-cooked meals desserts, but I want to add, you know, beer to the menu for the working people that get off work and we suffer, which is really, it's a very festive side thing.
Well, we thank you for reopening that. Although my belt line is going to suffer from it, I can tell you that. Do I hear a motion? Will you accept this?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is here second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, David. And Tish, thank you. The next thing we have is sign applications. The first one we have is for Town Place Suites. This is going to be for a sign that goes at the end of Concordia Avenue. It's where some of our existing riverfront signs are, and they're requesting this sign approval here. Was there any questions on this? Do I hear a motion? We accept this sign?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. Is here second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dory. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second sign is Town Place Suites. Again, is this the same sign or is this one that's going?
There's a temporary banner.
Temporary banner.
Oh, temporary banner on their actual location?
Yeah. Showing that it's now open. How long would the temporary sign be there? Because it looks like it's the same location.
Oh.
The same location. They want it until the permanent sign gets constructed.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Doray. Is here second. Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, we have board consideration for approval of beer and liquor license. The first one is Cafe, Vidalia LLC doing business at the Cafe.
We've missed.
Did I miss one?
You missed two of them, Mr. The Cafe. Mr. Parker has a sign application, and I'll make the motion.
Okay. I missed a sign application.
Second.
Okay. Second, motion made by Alderman Dory. Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we have one more.
What about Reed?
Okay.
They got a little out of order. We had a lot this morning.
We did. That's good. Oh, this is.
Reed's Lawn and Landscaping.
Yeah, Landscaping. Is there any questions on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is Brian here? Brian Reed? Okay. Motion made by Alderman Dory. Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor? Okay. I was getting ahead of myself. Next thing we have is the item five on our agenda, board consideration for the approval of beer and liquor license for the Cafe, doing business at the Cafe and Town Place Suites. That's for beer and liquor. And Cafe Vidalia is for beer only. So any questions? Or here a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray. Second by, I think, Alderman McCoy?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
The girls in the globe, though.
Pardon?
Did you do both of those together?
We did. Do we need to separate?
There was the Cafe for beer only and there was.
Town Place Suites for beer and liquor.
And I'm just wondering.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item number six is board consideration for the approval of proposed new hire for Vidalia Police Department, Lakota Burns, part-time dispatcher. Any questions by the board?
Yes.
Okay.
We probably need to table this in the executive session about this new hire.
All right.
We probably need to table this in the executive session about this new hire.
Okay.
Why would that be on?
Well, if the new hire, we do bring those up for board consideration. If it's just a hire, unless it's a, we got to be real specific on if we go in executive session, if it's dealing with a disciplinary or something like that, you have to go in executive session. But I don't think for a hire, it goes.
We need to table this.
Are you making a motion to go into executive session?
No. Not at this late, David. I can just table this. And everybody might not agree, but I'd like to table this until we try.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to table this hire?
That's where I am. I want to make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy to table this hire. Do I hear a second?
I'll second because I'm curious.
Okay. Second by Alderman Doray. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is tabled. Number seven, board approval for request for bids for new bucket truck for utility department. Mark, you're here. Would you want to address?
We have a 2007 model truck that is replaced by a house. This is already pretty good, but it's so it's a pretty professional.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we?
I'll make that motion.
Request bids?
How many do we have total? We have a total of four? Would you be, when you say replacement, you're going to get rid of or sell the O7?
Correct. But it takes at least nine lots to get a deal with a special owner. So hopefully, they'll want to ask, please, that one.
Will it, will this be a lease or is this a purchase?
Well, once the bids are awarded, then we can do however we want to.
What's your past practice on it, Mark? Past practice, what have you been doing, leasing or?
Past practice, what have you been doing, leasing or buying? Where we buy the, we lease garbage trucks, you find it's better to buy than to...
I would never want to do it, just with my own branch.
They have a longer life than a garbage truck though, most time, right? They have a longer life than a garbage truck?
Apparently.
Yeah.
What's your...
You keep them a lot longer and pay them off and keep them after that, right?
Yes, well, we're rolling so it's...
Okay.
I will say, these guys are up in the air sometimes at midnight with older trucks. I would like to keep our guys safe for sure and have good equipment they're working on. So I think if you've been using that since two thousand and seven, that good service out of, with what y'all provide, so I think that's a good deal, so. Do I hear a motion that we...
What's your estimated cost?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Alman Garner, second by Alman Dory, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight is board approval. We have, it requires us, we got a DEQ audit that is done on an annual basis, and I need a resolution to accept the DEQ audit of the town's wastewater treatment facilities. Do I hear that motion?
Um, any questions? Are we going to ask any public ask questions about...
In relation to the audit, yes, you can ask a question. Mark and I will let Mark ask any questions on the audit itself. Mark, would you go and give a report on the audit itself, what it basically?
Well, it's a pseudo-report for the two year of the DEQ, just for twenty eighteen. We had, it's a clean audit, fairly, it's got a couple avenues. One of them moved over on the flow for four months, that has tricked the river, won't do that, and flushed, they seem like for a year. The other avenues was on single color form, and we had two of those out, and how they suffered, we got saved in Florida, and something happened, so, other than that, it was good.
Okay. So, so basically, it was, it was good. And you said that, now, during the audit period, is that for a year, that audit period's for a year?
Twenty-eight.
And it was just two days that that was?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, five.
Two days, okay.
Yeah, we just bring the time of five a week.
Okay.
Twenty-eight.
Two days?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Two days, only two days. Will you explain the people's...
Uh, yeah, the people's color form is the bacteria that's in the sewer that actually does the work for you, keeps the sewer up, that's why we have to, we have aerators that put oxygen in the water.
And when it's out of compliance, what does that mean exactly? Does that mean that it's kind of oxygen?
We can have, we can have, as many as four hundred milligrams of liquid in any sample as possible, as far as we was at six hours, the rest of the time we were...
And Mark, I mean, as far as that, I mean, where does that come from? Y'all, we're totting around that internally ourselves now. That goes into our wastewater, and that's what that is. And, and Mark and them, I think, by the oxidation, the photo oxidation, and also the aeration that we do, and then it's treated, I think, before it goes into the fluid line of the Mississippi River, goes through a chlorination process as well. So, and it's those two times where, for example, if you have algae bloom in our sewer ponds, the sunlight can't penetrate, and, you know, you have the photo oxidation of that, so that could, if you have a long cloudy, cloudy spell, which we've had with all the rain this year, that's actually pretty good, I think, as far as just having that too, those two orders, just two days.
I can say that it's saved.
Right. Okay.
I move that we accept the DEQ...
I still have a couple questions.
Okay. Okay. Are they in relation to the, okay, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Martha.
Yes, ma'am.
You have something to say here?
Ma'am, wait, ma'am. Des, Des, now, Des, all right.
Would it be okay if I asked a couple more questions?
Sure. If it's in relation to the audit, sure.
Um, okay, so, one of the things that you, that's in the audit on page, let me find it. On page, um, fourteen, what companies have been experienced over the last year that has threatened treatment? This says infiltration.
I understand what infiltration is. Can you explain that to everybody else? And can you explain how infiltration threatens treatment of sewage?
Infiltration, you plug, infiltration is water, like river water, river's being up, it gets a crack in the sewer line, and it's popped to the limit, and you have to create extra water, so, the problem is with the sewer.
And can it cause backflow?
Backflow, no.
It cannot cause backflow?
No.
Okay. And then, one other question I have, it says, you know, how, what financial resources do you have available to pay for your wastewater improvements and reconstruction needs? It says grants and sales tax, but I know from the October meeting that we haven't had, there's nothing in the budget for wastewater treatment, so, sales tax could not possibly be applied to that this year, is that correct?
Well, we have some sewer projects that's going, going down that we have that's repairs, and they will be in capital outlay. As of right now, everything else is, is just on a normal operation sewer. There's nothing other than maintaining, even this afternoon, if people have noticed on Concordia Avenue, we're starting to have a sinkhole there. We have a river that's putting a lot of pressure on our town that seems like it's higher than normal. And when that river goes down, it takes material with it. So we're going to have to deal with this issue, and we have, I think, Desti, we've improved the town finances to where we're going to address these things as they pop up. But as far as any kind of major upgrade running out to our sewer, that's not something that's required at this point. Some of those things that have been problems in the past have been the infiltration from a high river, which you can't help, and, you know, significant rainfall, which will overburden your system. There's no chance of anything backflow coming back out of your system, back into your streets. But anyway, so, is that...
But haven't we had problems in the past with sewers overflow, manholes overflowing?
Pardon?
Problems in the past with manholes overflowing?
That was from, at those low point manholes, when you had significant rainwater and infiltration, those, that sewer could possibly come back up in the street.
So it can backflow?
No, no. You're talking about from the sewer line. This already in the line right there, so, it's...
Okay. Well, I'm trying to understand, so, okay. And then, a couple other things in this DEQ audit. It says that there's no, there's no room for community involvement. We don't have any plan for community involvement in any upgrades that we have to the system. And if you're going to make a resolution, I'm asking if the, you could make a plan for community involvement. That's something that I would like to be involved in. And there's also no written plan for preventative maintenance for our major equipment, and I feel like that's something important, you know, for it to have.
Okay.
And one other question that I need to ask, who is the governing body of the wastewater treatment facility?
The governing body, the governing body of the town is the Board of Alderman. However, I mean, I don't know where you're going with this question, we're getting off the DEQ audit, I mean...
No, it's on the DEQ audit.
What is it saying? Does it ask a question of who the governing body is?
Well, it does, it has, in the very first page, it talks about the governing body. So you need to submit the environmental audit to the governing body. So I just want to establish that the governing body of the wastewater treatment is the Board of Alderman.
Yes, ma'am, and we're making that motion here tonight, and that's what they request. So, do I hear a motion that we accept the DEQ audit?
I move that we accept the DEQ audit.
Motion made by Alman McCoy, here, second.
Aye.
Alman Betts, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. That's going to take us to item number six, I mean, number nine.
Second.
Did I miss one?
No.
Okay.
You're good.
Item number nine, can I hear a motion that we enter in a public hearing on an ordinance, amending ordinance number six seventy-eight to increase the compensation of the clerk of the town of Badae?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alman Garner, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alman Betts. We're now in a public hearing. Any questions on this, this particular ordinance? Yes?
I didn't catch your vote.
Oh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in, we are in public hearing. I'm going to solicit a response from either the public and the council at the same time. When we go into item number ten, which is consideration of the ordinance, we will go to a vote. So all the discussion I would like to have during this public hearing, so. Anybody have a question? No questions?
Make a motion, we close.
But this is Alderman discussion as well, correct?
Yeah.
You have a question?
Okay. Mr. Angworth, I'm going to recognize you.
Okay. I've had discussions with Buzz, matter of fact, for a long discussion with Buzz, three times in the last week about both of these issues coming up. And I've been fortunate enough to be to y'all, and I'm very...
Do you have the microphone?
Also, discussion, give me time. They are a layer of my objections for both of these ordinances. I've presented him a number of reasons why I'm opposed to it, but primarily, it's after having the study that we had, it seems pretty apparent to me that our utility funds are required to bear the burden of producing revenue for our town to operate, other than the special funds that we get money from, from other sources. And it seems to me that with this being required by ordinance, and ordinance has said it, we've already said it one time, the pay level, I've researched for the average, and it's the highest and the lowest, all added up, for a town attorney, a town clerk, is somewhere around between forty and forty-one thousand dollars.
Can I stop you right there, Ray? Can I ask you a question? Did you research what a human resource director for a hundred and forty employees would cost?
We're talking about a clerk, which is required by your statute to do. And Buzz, you know, I've got, I'd like to, you know, continue with the whole thing, so I don't lose my train of thought.
Okay.
But, and the population that we have is thirty-nine hundred and ninety people. That puts us in the category of a town, so, I looked at the national averages for town clerk. I could not find any information, but I was able to find a lot on city clerk. And across the United States, the five thousand figure for population is what determines the difference. In that time, in that study, which I found one for every state in the union, the national average and the Louisiana average for this position, and it's between forty-four and forty-five thousand. And again, that's taken into account of the largest to the lowest. I think that we are currently in a position where anything that we spend money on affects what we're paying for utilities. And therefore, adding another cost of ten thousand dollar increase, plus the forty-three percent sold that that department takes for the benefits package, is a fourteen thousand dollar, three hundred, fourteen thousand, three hundred dollar increase that we have to deal with. And I haven't got an answer yet as how that would be funded, but I'm sure it's going to put some pressure on our ability to get some lower electricity rates that each of you have campaigned on, and, well, all of you haven't campaigned on that particular thing, but you have campaigned on giving some reduction in the burden on the, on the regular citizens of this town. Now, in that respect, and because of my conversation with you, I'm totally against any kind of increase that puts us even further away from what's happening across the country. We are unique, we've got great things, benefit, great employees and so on, but the fact is, we've got more than the average, and we are paid more than the average, and that affects our electricity rates.
Okay. Can you wrap that part up, Ray? I mean, can you wrap up? I mean, we get to, you're not in support of the...
I'm not in support of, matter of fact, I oppose it.
Okay.
And I think, I think all of you know from the reasons, I gave you a number of reasons beyond what I just said.
Okay.
And I ask you to review those and, you know, vote accordingly. Tonight, our Board of Alderman have the opportunity to decide either to spend more money or cost more money for this town, or do what they were going to do from the beginning, and that's helped reduce the burden on the people of this town.
Okay.
But one other factor I've considered and needs to be expressed is the fact that the median income of our town, our community, or a family, is around thirty-three thousand dollars. That's, that's for a family. We're, we've got a situation where every man, woman, and child is cost, would be a cost on those people of over nine thousand dollars. Every man, woman, and child. You have the opportunity to deal with that tonight and take a big step towards that reduction in cost, a burden to the city, citizens of this town. Thank you. I thank all of you for your time with me, too.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I have some questions. Um, this, you know, this is constituting an eighteen percent increase in pay after the clerk has been the clerk for only one year. When, when you and I met and this came up in our meeting, you did say that, you know, you were anticipating requesting a raise for all of the employees in town of three percent. So if I'm an employee of the town who's been here for, you know, five, six, ten years, and I'm offered a three percent increase, and this position, after only one year, is offered an eighteen percent increase, I question why? Because I'm sure that, you know, we all praise every employee in this town and the work that they do, they're all dedicated, they all do great work. And so the question, you know, that I have is, is why is this position deserving of an eighteen percent rate of increase in pay while others are only considered about a three percent?
Okay. Can I answer?
Yes.
Okay. Since I've been in office, we have cut personnel costs to this town two million dollars. We're operating your town two million dollars cheaper in personnel costs since we took over. It's two and a half years ago. So what does that mean? We've asked employees to do more, they got paid more, they get paid more, we expect more. And Jay came in, and everybody understands the situation that Vicky was in, she was sick, and God rest her soul, she was, she was a soldier, she really was. And Vicky had accumulated a salary up to around seventy-five thousand, just the base salary. Jay was doing basically, and I told Vicky, I said, "Vicky, you get well, you take care of yourself, teach Jay everything you can, and until you find a time that you feel like you can't do this anymore, don't worry about it, we got it, but you just get yourself, you just get yourself well. I'm not going to train Jay to push you out." And I didn't do that, and I would do it that way a hundred times over because she deserved it. Anyway, Jay was making fifty-five thousand dollars doing that, doing that work, and God rest her soul, she, she worked hard and tried the best she could. When, to me, to get Jay confirmed, I think it's no secret how hard it was, I thought I was going to get, just to get Jay confirmed.
I'm going to interrupt you, though. You've said that on...
Let me, let me finish you, I'm answering your question.
Okay.
Anyway, so, you know, Jay was doing the work, and when he came in, during that time he was assisting her, he took on more responsibilities. For example, if you'll pull up a human resource director for any small company, any city, it take, for every forty employees, they require a full-time human resource director to handle those people. Jay LaShawn is the human resource director for a hundred and forty employees. He handles their child support payments, their withdrawals out of their checks, their vacation time, their sick pay, their leave time, their, all their questions, those guys, their retirement. This man is the resource that no other clerk has to do. And so, what we have is the value in it, we're saving the town. That's why we've been able to lower the cost of this town, because we've got people like this man, working on staff, just like everybody out here. I support, I want to give them more money, and it might be three point eight percent that we give these employees come up for this new budget year. that we give these employees come up for this new budget year. Jay's not gonna be in that conversation to get that increase. He is set by ordinance. He's not gonna be, I'm not gonna be in that conversation. I shouldn't, I mean, unless the council agrees to that, that's not gonna change. The three percent increase, or three-point-eight, it might be four percent, is gonna be cost of living, it's gonna go to those employees. He won't be on, he won't be available, he won't be eligible for that. All I'm saying is, this man is an investment in our town, is every employee, every one of them's important, but this man is got the ability to do something that nobody can step in there and do. And since he's saving the town this much money, and also, I think, y'all said at that time, some said that they wanted to address his salary, once, you know, revisit that. And we're revisiting, we put it out here, and that's why we do it, and that's why we're bringing it up to this, at this time. So, I hope that answered the question.
Why was it put on the agenda, taken off the agenda, and added back to the agenda during the top secret meeting?
There's not been a top secret meeting, Destiny, I'm sorry. There was not been a top secret meeting. I invited the press and some individuals to come in, mainly chamber members or business owners, to have...
Public hearing, yes?
Pardon?
So, was it a public hearing?
It wasn't a public hearing. I invited some people to come in to get some information. Thank you.
Matt, one second, you didn't answer her question.
What's that?
She asked you, why was it put on the agenda?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't answer your question. Because of the controversy, it seemed to be, between some people, I didn't really wanna put Jay through the, what he's going through now, and...
Well, you're doing it, so why did you put it back on?
Because some of the people requested we put it back on, just to see, you know, that they, that they supported.
You didn't poll the Aldermen, did you? You didn't poll the Aldermen?
I did not poll the Aldermen.
Because I heard some things, I might have, then there might have been a polling, I wasn't polled, I'm sure.
You weren't? Well, I had talked, I asked Ms. Dora, did I ask you back several weeks ago?
You're not supposed to poll the Aldermen, are you?
Tommy, at that time, I was asking what they thought about it, and I don't have to poll them, I know how they feel.
No, you don't, not till we vote, you don't know how they feel.
But, okay. So in conversation with her, it has, I mean, we're planning on doing this, and she says, "Well, I'm not in favor of it." I didn't.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
But firstly, you said what I have to say.
You've got someone to comment.
Bill, go ahead.
I'd like to respectfully ask the Board of Aldermen, please vote on this and please support it. This man deserves his pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clap him, miss.
Yesterday, I spent almost three hours with you, Ray. We talked about many things. We agreed on lots of things. We agreed on the job that Jay's doing. Now, I don't personally know Jay, I've met him three or four times and known him, business setting, but I, everything that I've looked into, he's doing an absolutely superb job. Now, the thing is, that you've got, and you've got a very good point about the average and all that, but he walked into a job that was making seventy-six thousand dollars, is my understanding, for fifty-five thousand dollars, because the town was in a hole at the time, and they couldn't pay him. And there was great expectations, I'm sure on his part, and with the mayor, that he would get a raise somewhere in between, where it was at fifty-five thousand and seventy-six thousand dollars. And even at, that's sixty-five thousand, he's only getting half of the difference between what she was making. Then the thing, the thing comes up, she was here for so many years. You know, in a job, it's not how long you've been in the job, it's how well you do the job, and your capability. So you're buying a capability. And believe me, I pay this much, what he's making right now, for a manager at the hotel. So, I'm telling you, it's not out of whack. You got a good man, you ought to keep him, and I urge you, please, raise his salary.
Thank you, Virgil.
We're talking about two different things, though. We're talking about Mr. LaShawn, who I don't think anybody disagrees that he is the best man for the job.
Great guy, I'm a great guy. He knows I like him a bunch.
You know, and that's like the mayor said, he had a hard time getting him confirmed, and I wanted to object to that. He didn't have a hard time getting Jay LaShawn confirmed. There was no, there was no opposition to Jay LaShawn becoming confirmed. Everybody on this board knows what an asset he is, you know, he's always Johnny on the spot. That's subject one. Subject two is the position of the town clerk for a town the size of Adelia. If after one year of service, he is getting this large of a raise, where do we go from here? In five years, if, you know, the same person is in the position, is another raise gonna be expected? Where's the cap? There is something to be said for years of service. If you've got somebody who is working in a position in the town of Adelia, doing the same job, who's making ten dollars an hour, and a new hire comes on, making twelve dollars an hour, you're gonna have an issue with the employees. So, yes, his capability, Jay LaShawn as an employee, you won't find a better one. I agree with that. He's one of my favorites. But there is a separation. We're talking about a position, and not just a man. We're talking about one year in that position. One year being named in that position. Where's the end game? If it took Ms. Vicky that long to get to where she was, and she was fantastic at her job, you know, she was great, she was a great asset to the town.
Well, that's my point, Sabrina.
Right.
Is the job deserves the cost. If you can get the right person in the job, then they should get the pay. Now, what if she could live another fifteen years? You've been paying seventy-six thousand dollars, not sixty-five thousand dollars. And, but he's doing the job, and that's my argument, and I understand the other side, but I'm telling you, he's worth it. And you know he's worth it, but the thing is, you've got these other factors, and I understand that, too, and I appreciate that. But if it's me, I'm recommending to you to give the man the increase, the town that deserves it, and they'll be well rewarded, I assure you, they will be.
I would like to say one thing about this. Right now, if you looked at our budget, and you were to look at our budget, where we're at on far as our general fund and the personnel services there, we're running under budget because we have worked hard to get people in position. It's an annual thing, but it's only gonna cost three thousand for this budget year, and, you know, and then, like I said, the, thus far, if somebody wants to know where the money comes from, it's not gonna affect the budget at all. That's my point, okay? So, Ms. Corrine?
I want to know if he's had added duties. Is he doing more than Vicky did?
Ms. Corrine, he is doing, he has got a full load, and he does, he wears a lot of hats, and there's even more things we're gonna be expanding to, but once we finish his policies and procedures, there'll be some more audit procedures done over, for example, tickets, maybe, you know, where we've got, that's our next order of business to get those policies and procedures done. He, like I said, he is, he is doing the work of several people, and he is a value for our town.
That's what I was asking, Buzz.
If I lost him tomorrow, we'd have to hire two or three people.
That's what I was asking.
But the question was, is he doing more than what Ms. Burns was doing? Did she have the same responsibilities?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I would say he's got more, at least equal to, and I think he's got more, because...
That's what I understood, but I was asking.
Because I don't know what level, I don't know what level the, at that time, the accountant helped him with, I mean, or helped, Ms. Vicky helped the accountant with, or the accountant helped her. I don't know, but, I mean, we're all working together to do things, but he has a full plate and a big responsibility, so.
And I just wanna thank you all for the budget, I think it's wonderful. I feel like the culprit that, two or three years ago, I fought because we were not having a good audit, as I felt, and I wanna thank you, and certainly you people that work on it every day.
Thank you, Ms. Corrine. Raymond?
Will there be any other raises considered within that department?
Within that department? Not at this time. As far, I mean, until, I mean, till we have the cost of living raises for the new budget year, but there could be a possibility, it just depends, we do have some new hires, and we lost somebody who had been a clerk, an accounting clerk, for several years, and we've hired somebody cheaper, and as they, so I'll rephrase it, yes, it could be, a possibility of that, yes.
Will you be, will you be naming an assistant clerk in the near future?
Probably will be, yes.
And will there be an increase in salary for the person named assistant clerk?
It could be, because that person may wear other responsibilities as well, so, and I have reasons for that, and I'll be glad to discuss those with you, and it's not anything to do with our personnel, it might be the overall picture of what we spend to get some financial assistance, I would say that, so.
So the added workload that he currently bears will be shared with an assistant clerk moving forward?
No, I'm saying the assistant clerk is gonna pick up other responsibilities to help Deborah on some things, and audit function, and also some record-keeping responsibilities that the panel's been laxing on for several years in the past, and we're not gonna fall into that deal. Mr. Ainsworth?
Buzz, of course, Virgil and I did have a very good meeting the other day, and it did last a couple of hours, matter of fact, I think, I think he was fortunate, he, I was fortunate enough that he would stick with me for that long. I was also fortunate enough and pleased with the fact that you spent probably fourteen, fifteen hours with me in three weeks.
Good, nice.
I appreciate that, and I asked you some very, I asked you some very pointed questions. However, one other aspect of this, which has already been mentioned by one of the Aldermen, is that you did put out an agenda on Friday for this meeting, and it did not include that, you dropped it.
And I've answered that question, Ray.
You dropped it on the basis of discussion with this group that you had in here, that the paper reported on. Now, I want you to know that prior to all of the conversation with you guys, I did talk with Jay personally. Jay has been Johnny on the spot, he, in my opinion, you can go to Jay and get, get what you need that is public information. I've done that many times, and he has responded. I appreciate him very much, but I separate him from the ordinance, or the statute requiring you to have an ordinance for the position, as well as all other positions who are municipal officers. You included, you inherited the past mayor's pay. The last pay that was set by ordinance was done in two thousand and eight, and the pay that you inherited was much, much greater than that. So you were out of compliance at that time, and you've rectified that later. I appreciate that you're doing things to get in compliance, there's a lot of progress you guys have made. But the issue now is how much you're gonna do to help reduce the burden of the citizens.
Ray, let us, okay, I appreciate you saying that. And we're fixing, we're fixing to wrap this up, please.
Yeah, yeah, one quick thing to say.
I wanna also say, with my experience with Jay, always on top of it, he waited till after work yesterday to give me something that I needed, and so we appreciate you, Jay. Just hearing everybody, you've got people for, you've got people against, what about a compromise? What about maybe a pay increase, but not quite as much as, what was it, fourteen thou, was it fourteen thousand?
Ten.
Ten thousand. So what about that? I mean, it's just me saying, you know, seeing both sides of it.
The ordinance will be presented as written. If it doesn't pass, then that would be a reconsideration if it doesn't pass.
So could you table it and, like, discuss it more? I mean, I'm just curious.
That's gonna be up to the Aldermen. So, anybody else?
Well, thank you, I just wanna say that that is, you know, Mr. LaShawn is wonderful, but I hear what Sabrina's saying, separating the man from the position. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take one more, and we got, we got...
Buzz, did I understand you right when you said that it should be forty employees to one clerk?
To one human resource director, what they usually...
Human resource director. Okay, so we have a hundred and forty? Okay, so that means we need three and a half clerks, right?
Three and a half human resource, what is a rule of thumb, you know...
Okay, so since we, we have Jay, that he's doing the job of three and a half people? So that means we're saving the salary of two and a half other employees, give Jay an increase, we're still saving on salaries, is that right?
And that's, and that's why we've been able to reduce the services that we've had, you know, at this point.
So, you know, just to accommodate, you know, I'm the mathematician, but I still think that, you know, giving Jay the salary that y'all are asking, or that you're asking, and he said whoever's asking. For Jehovah's, that requires freedom of people otherwise, and he's only one person, so be it, give him the raise.
Okay. All right. Rob? Okay, Rowan? Okay, all right.
I just wanted to mention, I have a similar situation to what Jay has. I used to work offshore as a medic in the Gulf of Mexico, I worked for a Louisiana company. I was hired as a medic, as a full-time medic, I covered fifteen to twenty-man platforms. So anybody that got hurt, I was their medical person, till we got on the shore. And that was my only, that was the only job I was hired for. Once I got out there, I'd been out there less than a year, as similar situation, and some additional duties came up. We acquired some additional platforms. The clerk that was doing the clerking duties on our platform, which was the headquarters' platform, had way more duties than he could handle, he needed an assistant. They asked me if I would take on an extra hat. My company compensated me for those additional duties, about twenty percent compensation. That is how it works in the real world, that's how it should work here.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make it quick, I just pretty much wanna say that, after my research, after sitting down with Mr. Ainsworth, I applaud you for your studies, but I came, I came to the conclusion that when a, when a man do a job, or a woman, because we have men and women that both are entitled to jobs, black or white, whoever it may be, when an individual does a job, and they take on more than one responsibility that that job requires, if you have three or four hats to wear, then you should be paid and compensated for everything that you do. I understand that your title may say one thing, but if we're saving money by using or utilizing, the professional word, but using this man to do a job that other, we could have two potential others to do, I think we should move on and go forward with him, give him the little increase, because we using him, you all, that's how I feel, he's being used. I hate to say it that way, but I appreciate you, every day that you come to work, every time I personally ask the Aldermen to have to call you about something, getting something done for me personally, from the insurance, or whatever it may be, because as city clerk, insurance probably shouldn't even be under your bill. HR decisions probably shouldn't be under your bill, but you do all those things, plus some, that's all I have to say.
Make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy. Close the public hearing, we're our second.
Buzz, can I say?
Sure.
Well, thank everybody for the comments. I just want you to know, not just me, but everybody at City Hall, we come into work, it's, it's a busy place, there's things come up every day, and we all try to address them as quickly as we can, do all the work we can, and try to be, and try to do the best we can for the town. Me personally, I'm an imperfect person, an imperfect clerk. I know we've got employees come in, some their leave time, get messed up sometimes, we gotta fix it, there's issues, and we do the best we can to get things straight when we can. And it is a challenge every day, but it's also very rewarding. And, you know, I just wanted, I wanna thank Alderman McCoy for introducing this, and Mayor Alonnis, and I wanna thank the entire board for taking it into serious consideration. And I wanna thank especially the, you know, the citizens of Adelia, whichever side of this you come on, it's a tough issue for everybody. But the thing is, it oughta go without saying, but I'm gonna say it, however this goes, tomorrow, me and everybody else, City Hall, and I'll especially be back at work, trying to do the best we can for the town. So I just, I just wanna say thank you.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy.
I just wanna close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion seconded by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Item number ten, Board of Consideration of An Ordnance Amended in Ordnance Number 678 to Increase the Compensation of the Clerk to the Town of Adelia. And do I hear a motion that we do that?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, we're our second. Seconded by Alderman Betts. Second made by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give your opposed.
No.
No.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Motion before the board is approving an ordinance, amending ordinance number 678 to increase the compensation of the clerk of the town of Vidalia, Louisiana. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderman Dorey?
No.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
No.
Mayor, it's the gays are three and the nays are two, the motion passes.
All right. All right. Item number eleven is public hearing on an ordinance establishing and adopting our electric, power, gas, water, sewer and garbage rates for the town of Vidalia, Louisiana and appealing, repealing all previous adopted ordinance dealing with said rates. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Dorey. We are now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public hearing for our rate ordinance. And like last time, any questions from council or the public, we will be glad to hear any public comment.
Hi, Mr. Ainsworth.
Okay.
Okay, if we reduce our rates, will we still get all the utilities that we have now?
Say, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
If we reduce our utility rates, will we still have the privilege of the utilities that we have now?
Yes.
Is there anything that's going to be done about the commercial rates for residential based business?
Not at this time. Other, other than the reduction of your electricity rate and the small increase of the water rate, you're referencing on your garbage rate?
I'm referencing on electricity, water, gas and.
Your rate, your rate, your electricity rate will be down as a commercial user in Vidalia, it will be down to, based on the power, new power cost adjustment, yes.
But I'll still be charged commercial electric rates.
You will still, you.
At my house.
At your house, to be, to have a.
My wife and children are at, well, I'm not working, they're using these rates.
That's correct.
And the trash pickup, for three days a week, that commercial paying customer gets it.
Okay.
And I only get twice.
Okay. If you, if you do request.
So I'm paying for something I'm not getting.
Okay.
That needs to be resolved.
Okay. Okay.
Probably compensated by.
Okay. I hear, I've heard what you're saying and we will just, I've told you before, we will discuss it and.
You have to tell me lots of times if it hasn't been.
But one of the benefits for being able to have a commercial business and be a, and have a occupational license in the city of Vidalia, that's, that's, that's a price you pay Jeremy to be considered a commercial.
But these other companies that are out of town companies that come into Vidalia, do they have an occupational license in this town? Like Thorpe Chief Metal or Natchez Heating and Cooling, do they have an occupational license in Vidalia to do work or is it just the people that live here that do work?
Occupational license, they do not have an occupational license. Occupational license is, is a Louisiana statute and it is for businesses that are domiciled within the state of Louisiana. You pay one.
In order for me to get my license in New Orleans, I had to get an occupational license in the city.
Whether you may have got a permit and they may have called it an occupational license, but.
It's an occupational license, I have one in action as well.
Well, then I would suggest that in the state of Louisiana, you would, you are only required to purchase one occupational license. Let me, let me, don't shake your head, sir, but listen to me. I'm telling you, by law, you can only assess one occupational license. Now, they can call it whatever they want to, a permit or whatever, but you have one occupational license. And you can push that legally if you want to, because that's what the statute says. Now, here's another thing you must remember too, is that by ordinance, there is not supposed to be businesses in residential zones. This board in the, in the past has made, has made.
Let, 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 let me finish and then you can talk.
This board has made consideration for people who did that, but there was also the consideration that they would be charged a commercial rate for that.
And there is no other town that does this.
Well, well, that may be true, that may be true, but that's the, unfortunately for you, that's, if you want to say it that way, that's, that's what happened.
So if I moved my business address out of Vidalia and I still reside at that house in Vidalia, I can still do work in Vidalia and I have an occupational license?
If you, if you have your permits, if you have your permits.
If you want to die.
Yeah. If you move your business, wherever you move your business, you'll be subject to an occupational license. The town of Vidalia could not charge you an occupational license.
So you said you had it in New Orleans, why did you apply for an occupa, if you had?
I had to have an occupational license in the city that my business is domiciled in to get an occupational license to do work in New Orleans. In order to get my electrical license in New Orleans, that's what I had to do.
Okay. Well, then you had to get your, you had to have a commercial license, and I see the point.
When I had to wait on the commercial license in Vidalia to grant me my occupational license, I almost lost the opportunity to get my electrical license in New Orleans because it was a costly thing, it had to be done in a certain amount of time.
So if you could, if you can get, I mean, how often do you have to renew your license to do electric work or whatever, I mean, how? Once a year?
I have to do it in action, I have to do it in New Orleans.
So, so to operate in Mississippi, you have to have, you have to be licensed in Mississippi as well to come over?
But apart from all of that, apart from paying licenses for New Orleans, licenses for state sales and use tax for Mississippi and that, Vidalia is my biggest business expense with utility rates in Mississippi.
Okay.
I want to address, Jeremy, he's called me several times, I know, and Lee, I talked to you before we started this meeting about the three pickups per week, which it states that a commercial person will get those three pickups. What's the problem that we can't do that? That you said we're going to see about it, he's told me that you told him that several times.
If he requests.
But yet he hadn't got it because he's got cameras on it. And Lee says they haven't done it because they just don't do it. And he said he agrees with me that.
He's in a recreation, I mean, he's in a residential area.
But he's still paying commercial.
He only serves that residential area two times a week, but if he requests it and y'all have a problem with it, we'll go three times a week.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying he's, no matter what, you, you go back to those other businesses wherever they are in town and pick them up three times a week, correct?
All businesses.
What is difference with him?
All these other businesses have the opportunity to turn their lights off in Vidalia. I can't do that. My kids on their, on their computers all through the night, running up my commercial utility rates. My family is being billed by the city of Vidalia for my business.
Well, you know, back when that happened, Jeremy, I don't know to understand the purpose, I will say this, that maybe that is just something that, that being a business and not having to go with.
This coming around. Nobody can ever tell me that, they always say this is just how we've always done it around here.
Okay.
When did it come in play? Nobody else does it.
Okay, can I finish?
Yeah.
All right. That is one of the, I guess, one of the benefits for you being able to be granted a commercial license, because otherwise, would that other town require you to go spend the money and make an investment on, on Front Street or buy a commercial building, put a storefront in, pay taxes and do those things? To me, it looks like you're coming out pretty good to be able to operate out of your home and not have an expensive amount of buy a building, paying, you know.
And that keeps me from advertising, it takes away from any.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just.
I can't have a sign out. Every town has people that have home dentures, it's not a new thing.
Okay.
Beauty shops, I mean, we, we've got people, beauty shops in homes, we've got different things. I want one answer tonight before we leave here for this man because he's been, are we going to pick him up three times a week or not?
If he requests a third time pickup, we will come pick, we'll come around and pick it up for a third try. If you recall us and come a third time, we won't get charged, we'll come pick up your trash if you've got trash.
I'd rather it all just go away.
I got somebody that's been, Joey, go ahead.
Well, this ordinance on this electric power, it says the electric power, gas, water, sewer and gold trade, but on our electric power, don't we also have a fuel adjustment?
We call it a power cost adjustment, it is a fuel adjustment that many other.
Isn't that open ended?
It, it.
That's not a locked in rate?
Well, the formula's the same, Joey, what changes is your consumption and also, for example, I mean, you have to buy power, we buy power from LEPA and that's the power that we use, everybody in residence and businesses, you buy that, that goes up and down all year, either up or down. The next thing is that LEPA number one is another variable in it, sometime, I mean, it varies, it averages about eighty-four thousand dollars a month that, before we got in office, I didn't know about, that was added into the calculation for your power cost adjustment. You take that and you get, you take your actual kilowatt per hour and you get your wholesale cost. You take that wholesale cost and you multiply that time your, your amount for loss, which is, I think it's one point zero seven, and you get an amount that, and then from that you subtract the static factor. We raised, this, this has the static factor raised where it gives the citizens a one, one point six one five break on their utility rates. And I've done several scenarios and I do it for anybody who wants to do it, they call my office or come to my office, I'll sit down and show it. My personal house, that I did it, and I just went back twelve months, I'm going to save on my electric by doing this, I'm going to save probably about four hundred and eighty-four dollars a year, my water's going to cost me about close to a hundred dollars extra, I'm going to spend a hundred dollars for forty-eight thousand gallons of water, that's less than a penny a gallon, you know, that's a great bargain. So that's just mine. I did other analysis to some of the businesses that came in yesterday, I gave them some analysis on their businesses on what they were going to save. I had one business, his water was going to be an extra two thousand dollars a year, but he's going to save twelve thousand eight hundred on his electric bill. I'll be glad to do the analysis for anybody in here to, to show what it's going to do for you.
So the electricity, it'll be one thing, you said that up and down, does that mean that fuel adjustment can be changed?
No, this, this, this locks in, Joey, the formula, the factors in the formula, which the static factor it locks in and against the people that break. Now, I can't just arbitrarily change it. I, the, the, the council should have that authority to, if we get to a point where we need to have money, we should have a public hearing, come in here and do it. In the past, I made two changes and, and one of those times saved the people, industry, commercial and churches, two point one million dollars. That saved, didn't go in people's bills, so when I say, people say, well Buzz, you said you were going to lower rates. I said I was going to lower your costs and that cost was to, to the tune of two point one million. This is going to be to the tune of, and even though we're going to grab back some of that water, because we, y'all have heard what we said as far as, we got to get the water into a positive position. We're about, the real thing we're probably giving to the people by establishing this rate is going to be about one point four million, but we're going to grab back, try to about three hundred thousand in water. So the net savings is going to be a little over a million dollars for the people. Rick Knowlins is here with Knowlins and Associates who did our, our rate study, did a marvelous job, gave us a bunch of information. At any time, Rick, if you feel like you want to interject at this time with what we did, I mean, you can, but, so that's some of the things that, that we've done, Joe, and again, you know, there's, if you have a question on what this is going to do for your bill, please call me, I'll, I'll do the analysis for you, give it to you and break it down for you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Martha was next, go.
In reference to the man here and his occupational license and stuff, being in New Orleans, and I could be very wrong, and John Betts may really help us out, but Orleans Parish is, as y'all know, they have a lot of different ordinances in their city that none of the other cities in the state of Louisiana have. And one of those things, I believe, is if you are an electrician or a plumber or a contractor of any sort, that you have to be licensed in their city in order to keep their, their fire rates down and it helps on the insurance. And that just does the same thing. And I think maybe that's why he was required, Orleans Parish, to have this occupational license. So, I mean, John may know more about that than I do, but I lived in, down there in my early years and I, I know that when you own a home down there, if you had someone that was not licensed, that did not have an occupational license, come in and work on their home, no matter what they did, that it went against your insurance. So that could have something to do with it.
Ray?
Oh, I, I wanted to make an explanation on the two point one million dollars. I, I believe the numbers you gave me was that you made that decision, some kind of going to do something like that. And I did know that the static factor of reduction that you identified now in the ordinance is the same factor you used back then, when you did it for a period of sixteen, eighteen months. And you also indicated that that two point one million dollars was a saving.
A savings to, to the, to the people, not to the town.
Yeah, what it did, it reduced the revenue and put you in a financial problem to force you to abandon that. That amounted to, and I've calculated for eight months, that's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a month that it was costing the town in revenue to have done that. Now, as I understand it, these ordinance figures have been in place as our existing payments, what we paid the last six months, it's eight in color, for that same number. And, and which tells me that if you have the same number, it's very likely going to be that hundred and sixteen thousand dollar loss every month, the loss of revenue. Now, our, our utilities are forced to pay for everything else that happens in our town. Primera, there are other sources, primer of our utility support. You have just saved it off the bill of the citizens for that month, but you put the burden on the town budget, which is always belonging to the citizen, for the same amount of money. Now, once the water gets in place, the water changes in there, it will collect from the customer thirty percent of that hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that you'll recoup from them. But the rest of it is, is a loss of revenue that you don't, may have needed to apply for some other thing like a last minute bill, which happened right here. I don't understand that.
You're wanting to know how, how we can, how we can shoulder the, the reduce.
Yeah, how can you justify?
Because we, because we have reduced our budget that far, Ray, when we first got in office, we have done all the things that we need to do, we've replenished the hydroelectric fund, we have been good on the obligations that were given to us to go forward. It's like, for example, if you're in your own household, if you say, we got to cut, we got to cut, we don't have money, we got to cut our spending, well, that's going to take you several months to realize any benefit from those cuts. Now, we've done realized, look, we've got, we've, we've turned the corner, we headed in the right direction and that's why now, we had the rate study done, we're putting the rate study, I mean, the rates back into the hands of the aldermen and we've got rates that are very, very, I mean, competitive if not better than our, 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 our other choices, which would be Energy of Louisiana or Concordia Electric. And we've done that and we can shoulder it now because we've made that much cuts and are operating your town more efficiently, that we can now shoulder that cut and leave it in there for you. That's what we've done. So that's, I hope that answered your question on that, so. Destiny? Yes?
So can you give us our current rates and then what our new rates will be? So that it kind of, and will this overall reduce the electric bill for the city, every citizen?
That's correct.
So can you give us the current rates for water, electric, gas, sewer and then the new rates? Do you know that off the top of your head, what are those rates?
Well, Destiny, there's, there's variables in that, I can't tell you exactly what the rates, I mean, the rate structure's there, but the power cost adjustment will change every month because you've got things such as usage, you've got, you know, the LEPA number one bill, the LEPA bill as far as what you've spent, you've also got, as far as gas, these are commodities that change daily and you can't, I can't give. are commodities that change daily, and you can't, I can't give you an exact rate, no.
Are water rates going up? They are going up, water rates?
Your water is going up a very small amount compared, but it's-
Gas rates?
Huh? Your gas rate's the same, gas is not changing.
So, electric rates will go down, water goes up. Sewer, gas pickup, is that gonna go up or down?
Sewer's the same, and everything else is the same. Only thing's changing is, we're establishing the static factor to where it's giving the people the benefit, the, over the, over a million plus to a million, a million four in electric savings to all of our customers across the whole grid. And it's gonna, the people gonna pay back close to three hundred thousand. So, the net effect is anywhere from eight hundred to, you know, one point one million savings in your electric bill. So, you're gonna spend, you're gonna pay maybe two dollars or three dollars more for your water to save anywhere from ten to fifteen dollars, you know, comparatively on your electricity.
But that won't hold true for everyone, because in one of the bills that I brought to you, you sat down with me and you had, you know, pulled a lot, and I appreciated it. But one of the bills that I brought to you, my bill would have actually increased because of my water consumption at my house. So, so it's not gonna hold true for every customer in Vidalia that you're gonna see a ten dollar or seven dollar decrease, some are actually gonna increase.
Becau- and, and, good point, but the reason why, we didn't go ahead and raise your water rates arbitrarily. I did go ahead and arbitrarily lower the static factor that y'all got to start seeing in your utility bill this past August. So, yes, what you're saying in effect is true, but this is giving y'all that break here and locking it in to where from here on out, it's gotta come before the board for a change in public hearing.
My electric bill has gone up every month. It goes up, I mean, it seems like every month, no matter what we do. It, and we're turning off all the lights, and I have a feeling that it might be related to the digital meter that we have, I'm not really sure, and I've been reading a lot about how they can be wrong.
I would just ask, I would ask you to come in, I'd be glad to look at it.
So, we don't understand, I hear you're saying that the rates have been lowered, you know, but even if I'm out of town, I was out of town for an entire month, we were in Atlanta because James was working in Atlanta, and I came back and my electric bill was seven hundred dollars. And that was, that was before you took office, I will say that.
Okay.
But I just wanna say, like, even if I'm not at home using electricity, my electric bills are beyond what I think is normal.
Well, bring it in, I mean, we'll be glad to check your meters, come in and let us look at it, because I wanna verify what you're saying, because I've had some residents bring in, and it's not that the rate's that bad, it's that their usage is out the roof.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is that usage is out of the roof, even if we're being conservative and even if we're out of town-
Well, that's, well, that's when I would say, what I'm saying, you might have, you could, or do you have, what kind of central air, I mean, do you have heat-
They're always turned off when we're out of town.
But do you have heat strip, or, or, do you turn your thermostat down, or do you turn it, your thermostat down, or you turn it off?
You know, I live, I live with the man, we have to keep the cold in the house, you know?
Come in, and, look, I'll be glad to analyze it for you, come in.
I'd be glad to do that, but I just wanna see, I worry about, I worry about a lot of people here in Vidalia because, you know, I, I'm a landlord and I have tenants, and um, my tenants, it's getting harder and harder for us to rent our houses out, because the electric rates are so high. And it's a complaint I hear all the time from my tenants, and it's a complaint that I hear from people in the community. So, you know, my concern is, I just wanna see the electric bills go down more than five to ten dollars a month, and only part of the citizens get that. So, that's my concern with the, with this thing.
And, and look, I appreciate, and I appreciate you saying that, but I had people in my office today talking about, they can't afford rent because the rent's too high. So, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know your situation, but, I don't know that's your situation, but, okay.
I need a, I need a point of clarification. Um, you said that you, you imposed the reduction in August.
In August.
So, this ordinance will not give any additional decrease in electricity, everyone is already realizing the maximum decrease in electricity at this time.
That's correct.
So, all this ordinance is, is really gonna do, I mean, I, I know that there are several factors, but what it's really gonna do, you said in the, in the newspaper article this morning, people could start seeing that change as early as March. The change that will be seen in March is the increase in their water and not any further reduction in their electric rate.
That's correct.
That is a correct statement, okay. Um, I mean, there've been a lot of people who have complained since August about the kilowatt per hour cost for Vidalia.
I, I did analysis on mine, at times mine was twice, in the last five months, my kilowatt per hour was ten cents, a little over ten cents, ten point two, ten point four. Uh, our choice is to have power, if it's not the city of a day giving you power, is Energy of Louisiana and Concordia Electric. I have a property in Farquhar, my Concordia Electric bill runs, that, those months was anywhere from twelve, thirteen cents. Uh, I've got bills from people who go Southwest and Energy of Mississippi, Energy of Louisiana, at various spots, all theirs during that time was around twelve cents. We're providing a very competitive rate with, we think, the best services and the best town that people wanna emulate, people wanna be Viday.
I understand, but I know a lot of older people who would give up some services to have a bill that they can manage. And also, I'd like to ask, is there a way for our city to do any kind of research on possible grants for people in the community to maybe obtain solar panels, to just ease that burden? And, and that's something I'd like for the city to look into, because I know that there are government grants available, generally for nonprofit organizations, but there might be something available for citizens here. So, is that something that the city could connect some families to look into, grants or something like that? You know, for the people who are the most economically distressed in our community, because I wanna grow our community.
Me too.
I wanna grow our community, and with our current electric rate, I see a trend of people not wanting to come here, and that hurts my heart, because you know I love Vidalia.
And Destiny, I'm sorry, but I see exactly the opposite starting to happen.
Okay.
Raymond Murphy. Do one of them. Raymond, Raymond had a question, hold on, Raymond, you-
I'm gonna have a question for the alderman, I know that you studied the rate, but my question for the alderman, and all of you ran at the same time I did, and all of us kinda talking about all the same issues, utility rates were one of the most. My question is this, do you really think five to ten dollars is sufficient?
No.
No. I use, Raymond, I use that just strictly on an easy basis, my, I said my savings was four hundred and eighty dollars. So, that's more, yeah, a year. So, I mean, that's significantly more than ten dollars. I mean, I just use ten dollars for comparison to say, percentages of water compared to, I mean-
If you're working to the hydro electric plant and trying to make Viday one of the lowest paid utility customers in Louisiana, do you really think that we've done a sufficient job? I'd be all thinking about that before we vote.
Okay, all right, Ray?
You mentioned your situation. Let me mention my situation. I've got two locations that serve, certified the electric and the water. One of them is outside the sewer entrance, right at the city. I use very little water, very little electricity in that location. I've checked eight of eleven bills and found those eight bills, I will pay more money for those eight months, I will pay less money for three months. So, my situation is unique, your situation is unique. Each of the people in this room have a unique situation. Everybody will not get a deduction, everybody will not get a deduction. But from a household, I get a reduction of seven dollars and seven cents of money. That is, that is a very small percentage of my total utility cost, varies a lot, is four percent, four percent. We have an ordinance in place where the people are supposed to get from the hydro loyalty fee, but funds that are coming in to this town, and you're gonna have like a two and a half million dollars excess this year. Virtually all of that is coming in that hydroelectric money that you receive. Why not take that money and distribute it in the form of a reduction because it wasn't written up on any shortfall of the utility department, the state care of it one step so that the hydro ordinance. Why not do that? Get the people immediate help that they need rather than wait them and hoping on you giving them a dividend check this end of year, which they haven't gotten in several years.
No, that's not true, Ray, they got one a year before last, they didn't get one this past year.
What I'm saying is, but, but since this, since, I'm talking about the history of this, we haven't put any money aside for the future possible purchase and operation of that thing. So, our, our income is decreasing every year, in my opinion, because it comes in, the town spends it. And, and, and our utilities, it's hard for you to give it based on the study that you done. Why not give more to the people right now? And make the utilities not just competitive with everybody else, but below everybody else, because that was the intention of, of the hydroelectric company coming to this town.
And when, and because what it does, and Ray, look, you go back, I can't talk to Sidney now, Sidney's son and his grandsons here in these meetings. Uh, I've heard Bill say that, you know, that Sidney's intent back in those days was that the hydro was gonna help the people have a lower utility bill, didn't say it was gonna be the lowest. I mean, uh, so, that being said, this year, I've already got the money budgeted because of our projections and our budget, that there will be a royalty pay this year to the people, and it'll be paid back to the people, and the people, and the council will have that decision on what to pay back. And we think it's gonna be, we think, our estimation right now, and we're looking at probably a million five to million six, that's our estimation. We don't know what the river's gonna, we don't know what the river's gonna do. If anybody tells you they know what it's gonna be, run from them. But I'm just telling you, that's what we're looking at, and we've got that budgeted to save, to give what is by ordinance allowed back to the people, that it's gonna reduce that cost even further. That's gonna put you below anybody, it's gonna put you in a good position below basically.
I accept that, is the one point one million you're referring to the citizens' part, or is it also split, like it's, like the ordinance called for it, so if the town gets fifty percent of it, and, and the citizens get fifty percent? One point one million, is that the citizens' share?
No, I said, we're expecting one point five or one point six, so if it's one point, let's say if it's one point five, you're looking at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be rebated back to the people. That, if it's approved by ordinance, by, by the people, I mean, by the council.
The previous time you gave some six hundred and seventy. That was a very low percentage as far as the hundred and forty dollar check that I got versus what I had paid out in electricity for the year, it was a smaller percentage.
Ray, I really don't wanna discuss your utility bill here, but you're a very frugal, you have a very frugal household, I will say that, you're doing a good job on what you use. So, it's, I don't wanna discuss your bill, but you, you are a good manager of your utilities.
Well, I've got a big house, but it's only two of us, and we spend a lot of time in one part of the house, and we don't worry about each other.
So, hey, use more, we'll give you a bigger check. So, use that electricity, we'll give you a bigger check at the end of the year. Virgil?
I've got a suggestion.
Okay.
What really people complain about is their bills vary so much, and they think the rates are really changing, but it's really that delta that you have to add into. If you guys could come up with a set rate, and then, that's your money from the hydro plant on a monthly basis, pay for that cost of LEPA one, and your formula that you're using, pay for that, and everybody would always know they had to pay. And then, the power company down there, that you get from the hydro plant, could supplement that and take that off the top, every month.
That's, that's contrary to the ordinance, the way it is now, but that would require a lot of, uh-
Hey, I understand, I changed that ordinance one time before, by you, Ray.
Uh, George, council, would you?
I don't remember changing that ordinance.
Yeah, well, anyway, just a suggestion, but it would, it would even things out so people wouldn't be confused.
That does bring up one thing. Uh, early in the day, we were gonna talk about, you guys talked about, there was a major change, making it nine cents flat rate. When I did my research, I took, uh, Mr. Malice's study, and some of his recommendations about the rate schedule, and I found that my, my percentage of saving moved from four percent to fourteen percent. I took the nine cent flat rate and moved it into the standard.
Where'd, where'd you get the nine cents from?
Well, it's discussed many times, why I made you, and that you opposed it with late from the study. I found that that nine cents was just a little bit over fourteen percent, as compared to Mr. Malice's recommendations of rates in his study. Uh, now, we've zeroed in on the, the, uh, the static factor, and that's the way you chose to do it, a year ago or more than that. And it's exactly the same number as he studied, and how it affects the rate. But it's four percent worth of some of his, some of his own suggestions, making it fifteen percent, and it'll take it that nine cent and it's fourteen percent. And I would say personally, for my twenty seven bill, that I, that I counted it, it, it seems reasonable that we can do that right now. Rather than what you put in your ordinance, we can make other studies based on his study. And, and the fact that we are over budget in terms of revenue versus expenditures this year, and you say, well, it's making an improvement, if we're headed in the right direction. Why not do that now, next year, maybe, as far as you, and so on.
Will be.
We want to see that, it's really good.
And, and when I think we, when I think we can healthy and do it in a healthy way, I promise you, when those revenues get there, Ray, I do wanna pass on a more reduction in those, those electricity rates, I do. But as far, were you advocating a nine cent flat rate? Because I would like to address-
He didn't advocate that, I personally took my study, and he was using on it, we put it at fifteen percent. I then, like, saying the registry, just inserted nine cents in every chapter of your suggestion, and it came out to be just over, I'll call it a scenario situation, using his recommendations. Uh, he, he, he studied a lot of things, and it was really in depth, and fantastic to get that amount of rate. But the point I'm trying to make is, the number that was studied, the static factor, happened to be, and I suppose you gave him that number, the point five two, what?
Five, two, three, eight.
Seventeen.
A factor of, of deduction. And so, I assume he studied that particular number because you supplied it. It happened to be the number you used during that sixteen month period, where it cost the town two point one million dollars in revenue, and you referred to it as a saving to these people. Uh, it doesn't make sense that if the town's lack of revenue is two point one million dollars, and, and it's because you gave it to the citizens, back to the citizens. The older people who bear the burden of this town's operation are the citizens. They're not you, they're not Jay, they're not-
Ray, you're, can I, can I ask you, well, you're confused, man, did you not want me to give back the two point one million to the citizens?
I mean, I- I mean, I...
Did you not want me to give that money back to the citizens?
I wanted to give more.
Oh, okay, I was confused.
Me too.
But you're, you're saying though that...
I was confused.
Huh?
Well, there are ways to get to it, other than what you're proposing.
What you, my, I interpreted, you sound like you was criticized because I was taking money away from the town. We didn't have money to, that that was going to cost the people.
Well, the only criticism is the fact that you refer to it as a savings and really it's an offset. You've caused the town to lose in revenue the same amount of money as you were putting on the citizens.
But that's going to happen. If he, I mean, if the utility rate is lowered, it is going to be a loss of revenue. I mean, that's going to happen whether it's, you know, a 9 cent flat rate or if it's, you know, what's, I mean, that's going to happen. If a savings is passed on to the people, it is always going to be a loss of revenue for the town.
That's right. I understand that.
Yeah.
He has the recommendation that I thought for.
Yeah.
However, it, it does keep pointing back to the fact that our, our utilities are burdened to, to create revenue for this town to operate more.
Right.
Uh, and, and, and although he wasn't studying those particular things, he just referenced the possibility that you could find savings elsewhere rather than on the utility, putting the burden on the utility to raise that.
You want...
And not doing that other than, you know, you know, it's...
And that goes to attrition and, and taking people that, when they leave, like Jay takes on more, other people take on more. And that's part of what I've been preaching the whole time, you know? Let's, not get rid of anybody, but let's get attrition where we need. We're losing people, but we're not losing employees in a sense of not buying them, but it, but we have to do more.
That's not implied. Be more than that.
No.
But you can find ways...
Right.
In your budget right now, not spend it.
Exactly.
And finding ways to get, uh, Mr. Betscher, in working with the Department of the Chiefs, County Council, indicated to work real hard, hoping to get 10%, around 8%. Uh, the other departments to do what the same thing, but we should please, uh, get to the same thing, 8% that we don't have to screen and, uh, probably did do this. Uh, and I, I think if this town needs to show you a lot of possibilities by these, in addition to the study that's been out here, which was an excellent...
And you said, Mr. Allen, you said there's two ways to get to it, tax and what is the other way?
Reducing expenses or raising revenue.
Taxes or...
That's always, excuse me.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's always the case. It's either, uh, raise revenue, cut, cut cost or some combination. May I take a moment just to make a comment, Mayor?
Sure, please do, please do.
Yeah. I've heard a lot of numbers thrown out here tonight. Probably all right in some respect. Um, I just did a quick check, uh, as far as the savings that's already been incorporated into the reduced electric rates for an average residential customer, and an average being someone who consumes on a monthly average 1,133 kilowatt hours, the savings is a little over $18 a month. It works out to somewhere around 13% or so, 13, 14%. That, that's what it works out to. Um, second, if, uh, uh, if, if, you don't have to adopt this budget, the rates are already in effect, I mean, excuse me, the budget, you don't have to adopt the ordinance, budget's been done, thank God. But the, uh, the ordinance, the rates are already in effect, but the budget that you've adopted was based on these rates. So if you come up with some rates that will give a different bottom line revenue, then you have to go back and take another look at your budget, okay? Um, and third, um, flat rates are very seductive. They, they sound good. I wish I had them at, at my hometown, but we don't. Um, there may be some things that could be done to shave the peaks and fill the valleys so that the variations, the fluctuations aren't, uh, as wild, wild and as wide as they are sometimes. Uh, there are some cities that, that, uh, depending on, on the, uh, level of natural gas heat versus electric heat in the winter are able to make some changes near electric rates. Uh, but those things have to be entered into carefully. Uh, you have to not only look at your operations on an annual basis and make sure your revenues meet or exceed your expenses, you also have to consider your cash flow. So that you have to have some money, money in the accounts so that at the end of the year, you can, you have a continuing concern, just like a business. I know back home in, in the parish of Nakadish, I have people asking me, man, at the end of the year, you had $700,000 in your road budget, why didn't you spend that? And I said, well, I don't get all my tax revenue on January 2. I've got to operate the first quarter and I can't lay my people off at Thanksgiving and hope they'll come back in January. That's not going to happen. So you have to have some money to operate on. So when you consider dollars, not only look at the absolute revenues, expenses, whether you have it in the black or in the red, but the timing of your cash is also important too. So that's just a few brief comments I wanted to make. Um, the set of rates that's in the ordinance, uh, actually are not exactly what I proposed, but the bottom line comes in pretty close. I went over the numbers with the mayor today when I saw it, I went, oh, this, this is different, you know? And it actually comes out that for a typical residential customer, the, the, these rates would produce a monthly cost of about 2% less than what mine would. Now, 2% sounds like a lot, but you could have a hot week or a cold week during the year and your annual utility costs can vary.
And if there were things that they could do to help within it? Well, there are programs that can help them. One of them is LEAF and I think, um, Robert Gardner is familiar with that. Another thing is through USD Act, yeah, um, rural housing, they can apply for something to help them do weatherization of their home, which would help to, you know, keep the cold air out and the cool air in, you know, which reduces your utility bill. But those are two, two different programs that, that are out there for people. And if they don't qualify, or I was one of them, then there's also your civic organizations and your churches that you can refer to that may have people that on the weekend, they may be contractors, whatever, they attend church or attend that organization or that whatever, that will come out and be glad to help these people weatherize their homes. The other thing, you know, last year, there were two months, the hottest part of the year, July and August, where we had air conditioner issues. Between those two months, my utility bill was 1,200 and $300. So did I call buzz and fuss about that? No. No, I didn't. Because that was just part of us trying to keep ourselves cool enough to survive and that was the point to that. We had the fact that we hate that. So I was glad that I had all the other amenities that came, that, that came in, you know? So I didn't have a problem with it. Now, you're telling me I'm going to save some money this year? Yeah, yeah, who? I don't care if this is a win, I'm moving.
Uh, good. Wayne?
Hang on, hang on, Des.
Wayne, I would recognize Wayne.
Pregnant woman, do y'all, do y'all estimate like what the profit of the utility department's going to be for the bill? Y'all gonna say, okay, we're estimating we're going to make this much for this, for this year off the utility?
We estimate our revenues and expenses.
That's what, that's how y'all make the budget up.
That's how we make the budget. It's estimations, Wayne, that we, we do our best and we try to take historical data. We plug in, for example, this year, we had the bump up in the royalty fund and we estimate those things and a budget is a guide, it's not an absolute. But we try to, uh, get it close as we can. We've done a pretty good job at keeping it pretty close where we think we're at. And what that does is when it's adopted, it, it, what it does is appropriate funds for me to operate the town, to write checks, pay a bill, water bill, utility bills, everything that we have, uh, by doing that. And that's why you have the variances on the general fund and also special revenue fund. If they have a variance of 5%, you have to notify the board that you're out of that variance and why. And that's the overall picture, not a line item deal. But yes, we do forecast our revenues and expenses.
The reason I ask that, okay, say, okay, you have your budget made up, okay, we're going to make this much off, you gotta have, we're going to have this much off the utility. Say, for instance, 50 households shut down and left today.
Mm-hmm.
You lost all the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Who, who absorbs that, the rest of that? Do you say, okay, well, we lost 50 utility customers, so I've got to raise a price per kilowatt for every other customer?
That, that would be a possibility, that you would have to look at that. And that's why we've worked very hard to do what we've done to, we feel like reverse that trend.
Because the reason I brought that up is because no matter what, and anybody in here, and if you say, this is not true, you're lying, it doesn't matter how much you try to conserve on electricity, or you say, all right, my bill's going to be low this month. The less, and I, I understand the usage adjustment if you call, but say I use 600, 700 kilowatts less and I'm thinking, and I know what I use because I go out and read my meter every day. And, okay, I'm going to have a lower utility bill this month, especially in the hot parts of the year, no matter what. Okay, you say yours is 10 cents, you average 10 cents per kilowatt.
No, on two, two bills in the last...
Just to say, right, you stick, okay?
10.2.
I might have one this month where, yeah, I used a lot of kilowatts and it's 10 cents per kilowatt. Okay, the next month, I cut way back, turn my thermostat up to 75, kill the kids every time the lever door opens, and, uh, that, that month, bills even higher because it's jacked up to 16.9 cents per kilowatt. And also, you can take every citizen, this, this is what's wrong, every utility user in this town. And they get a, and they get a, their bill every month. Every citizen for that month, you can vary it all you want, but everybody should be the same per kilowatt. You shouldn't have one at 10 cents and one at 16 cents. That's not right. Just because people are trying to conserve and save money, they're penalized for it.
That's right, sir.
That's true.
Well, what...
That's 100% right. It's coming through.
Well, okay. Let's say, right now, our rate schedule is at, the first 100 kilowatts hours is at, I think it's, uh, 15 something cents, okay? So true enough, to maintain our system, you know, you've got to have those people who might be having just a refrigerator in their home, keeping the refrigerator running, you've got to have a minimum charge to maintain your system as a base hole. And that 15 cents, you're charging them for that 100 kilowatts, what's that, 15 bucks? So if that's all they run, they're going to pay $15, which is 15 cents a kilowatt. But for you to make, for us to maintain this whole system and maintain the workforce, the equipment, to maintain all of the town as a whole, they've got to pay at least $15, which is 15 cents, even though they did, they conserve. They only had that one thing to use. Is it right to just lower theirs to like, uh, $4? And, uh, you've got to maintain all this whole system and also maintain, I mean, maintain that whole thing. You've got to pay a minimal cost and I think Rick would address that. You can't have, uh, and that's why it starts at the low stuff. You do, we do encourage you to, to conserve. We do encourage, but that first 100 kilowatts, I think the next turn, uh, the next one is 300? No, 200? 100, then 700, where the rates come in.
Yeah, I understand, I, I know how that, but what I'm saying is, there should be, at least, if you're not going to do a set rate across the board, there should be a cap. There should be a cap to wear, okay? No matter how little electricity that you, we cannot charge above this much per kilowatt because you really don't. Because mine will vary, like I said, from 9 cents to kilowatt, up to 16, 17 cents.
Okay, I, I, that was...
There should be a cap.
That was last year, if y'all remember back when we had the cold weather now, and the reason why y'all saw, saw your high, uh, PCA and your high rate in March of last year is because that's how the, it works as far as that adjustment on your power cost. That particular month, January, was when we had the critical time that, uh, our, our bill, uh, our usage went from buying, I think it was, uh, our bill went from a normal 280 to 300 something thousand, went to almost 600,000 that the residents used. So that was going to double everybody's bill and the cost of that, because it was so much demand on the system, that price went, I mean, it skyrocketed. And so when we got our bills in, we got our bills in, in February. Well, when that bill comes in for you, for January, we didn't get our power bill till February. That's not reflected, that increase in that price doesn't show up until your March reading or your March bill, that higher PCA to pay for that. So it's a lag of almost a month before you see that high cost. Probably that next month after that, you saw it go way down. So that's why it confuses a lot of people because when we have those things, you put it, it's almost a month and two months later that you'll see it turn up in your bill if you have those high instances like that.
Now...
But when incidents like that happen, which is very rare that we...
Yeah, it's rare, it is.
Every couple of years maybe, shouldn't there be maybe in the, the royalties that's set aside, okay, we're not going to bug the customer lap because, you know, mother nature boy, we, and we're going to use some of the royalties and we're going to offset the cost of it and absorb it.
Well, one of the things that I was fixing to say, one of the things Mr. Nolan said, he had a surplus of almost a million, is that right? A little better than 750? You just, you, you had an anecdote, you said you had some money left over that you had to hold on to, right?
Oh, no, I, I was just saying that when you're looking at a budget, you have revenues and expenses, you also have to consider the cash flow.
Right.
You make, you know, like...
So, one of the things that I'm concerned by is that our cash flow for the utilities is so tight and it's, you know, it's so, we don't have a lot of play money there. So that when that did happen, the town had no choice but to jack us up to 17 cents a kilowatt hour to pay for that abnormal cost. So, one of the things that I always hear, you know, people say is you've got to conserve. Two things I always think about when I hear that. When we conserve, we use less power. The city gets less revenue because we've just used less power. So guess what? Our power cost adjustment's going up next month. Because we've got to make up, the town has to make up for the lost revenue from the conservation that the people did. The second thing I always hear is, you know, you, you've got to insulate your home, you've got to do, you know, you've got to put double windows on. People can't afford to pay their electric bills. They can't come in and have somebody insulate their home and put new windows on. So one of the things I looked at is we give fantastic rates, we have these fantastic rates for the large industrials. We're talking about giving incentives, economic development incentives and, you know, a special board made up so that we can offer competitive rates to attract the businesses, the industries. And that's important, we need those jobs. But the lady who's 85 years old, who can't turn on her air conditioner because she can't afford it and ends up having a heat stroke, can't go and apply for that job. So what we have the rare opportunity to do tonight is to help 100% of the citizens from the wealthiest to the least fortunate. We have the, once in a, once in probably our lifetime on this board, we have the opportunity to help 100% of the citizens and say, you know, if we can offer these great incentives for the industry, where are the incentives for the small business owners? I own a business in Vidalia. If I drive up and down Carter Street and I look left and I look right and I, I'm, you know, driving through, I see business after business after business. Their rates are the highest in the town. But if you add up all those small businesses, that's your major employer in the town of Vidalia. It's not these large industries that get these rates that are actually less than cost once you get into those highest tiers. And who, who pays for that when we're, we're buying, you know, we're selling it to them at a loss? The, the commercial customers and the residential customers.
And most of those industries are already getting 100% industrial taxes.
And we, you know, we have to do those things so that we can be competitive. We have to offer those lower rates, we have to do all of those things. But my question is, where is the incentive, where is the break for the small businesses who employ the majority of the people for the town of Vidalia and for the residents who stuck it out with us? Because if we start lowering those utility rates and we make Vidalia even more attractive, we can already say in the plus column, we've got the best services out there, we always have had. That is not something that's new. We've got the lowest taxes, always have had, that's not something that's new. We have the opportunity to also offer the lowest utility rate so that these people that are being hired by these jobs, by these industries, will choose to move into Vidalia. All of the businesses, every one of them, every small business in town will benefit from that as well because we have more people shopping in the stores. You give the commercial businesses, uh, you know, an incentive just like you're giving everybody else, they can lower their prices or they can afford to hire more people or give pay raises. It's a win-win 360 degrees. Because as more people move into the town, we get more revenue as well. we get more revenue as well.
I'd like to make Mr. Say-
Ms. Ms. Urina, she, she held her hand up.
You don't mind if I stand?
Yeah, please.
Uh, my name is Heather Urina, I'm Executive Director of Estachi Delta Regional Planning in the Delta District, I'm a certified economic developer. Um, I work primarily on infrastructure issues, um, I would say that we work complementarily with, uh, the folks that do the attraction business, but also with the small business.
Mm-hmm.
Largely, we're caused by government. We do a lot of work with communities and teams of folks who look at the cost of doing business as a community, as a municipal system, as a nonprofit system, water, wastewater, uh, just the cost of infrastructure. But we also have to look at what the cost of doing business is. As one example was offered, I believe, earlier this evening, um, the cost of having a system should be borne by everyone, that there's a certain amount of just having a system that everybody has to pay for, and they're saying, basic unit price, that, that there are layers of classes and pricing to, to equate to how we got here. How we got a formula of that was, as, as there is, we can come up with, or what opportunities we could. One of the things that I've heard so much, we talk about, is that when you have changes in the utilities on the municipal system, is it changes for our revenue? Well, one of the reasons that you would offer, I call it a volume discount, to a larger user of that's industry, would be a stabilizing factor, because it creates stability of, across the system, there being a certain amount of use all the time, so you don't have as many fluctuations overall. I'm absolutely for economic diversification. I absolutely, 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 all sizes of business, most of our work is predominantly with communities creating a sense of environment that working business, and with small business that, you know, self-employed folks, to very small air prices, whether they be retail or any type. I believe absolutely in the American community, absolutely, in self-employed, absolutely, in job creation, business creation. But when you look at an economic model for operating a, um, a sense of infrastructure and a service, you're paying for the infrastructure, and our municipal systems, or even if they're parishion, those that are capital management, we always want to do right by our citizens.
Mm-hmm.
But we are also at that part, what I'm going to call a social enterprise, that's not what it's called in the audit, but it's, you know, a term that more and more folks are starting to understand, is social entrepreneurship, is we can't afford to deliver a service without generating enough return on it to maintain the system.
Mm-hmm.
So when you have a stabilizing force with a larger user-
Right.
-consistently providing it, there would be an opportunity. It's kind of like when we go to Sam's and we buy big cases, hey, we got a discount.
Wholesale. But if we're offering that at less than cost?
It's not less than cost.
So if we're paying four cents a kilowatt hour, and their highest tier is three cents a kilowatt hour?
Well, you also, you have to factor in your power cost adjustment for three cents-
And your demand charge.
And their charge, your demand charge for per kilowatt.
Okay.
Our is seven dollars and fifty cents per kilowatt on top of their budget.
So, and, and these incentives that are, that are given, what I'm saying, she is saying, you know, we've got the stability, I get that, you've got to have something flowing, the more we buy from LIPA, we probably get a better price at. Get it, one hundred percent, one hundred percent understood that. The problem that I have is, you still have those small businesses. We have no economic development incentives for the small businesses in the town. Once the small business comes in, they, they don't get the same attention and attraction that these industrial businesses have gotten. Um, and that's what, that's what I'm kind of looking for. We need to go ahead and incentivize people to move into Vidalia and stay here, we need to incentivize small businesses to hire more employees, to lower their prices, to make Vidalia a more affordable place. All of the economic development has centered around large industrial, and I understand that the need to do that is because we need jobs created, we have to have jobs or we will suffocate and die. Point taken. But when you've got a situation where people are choosing to move outside of the town of Vidalia because they can't afford to live here, we no longer have the drawl of being the best school in Vidalia, you now have options to send your children to that you don't have to live inside the Vidalia city limits. We need to create something, one thing, that makes it to where you can't afford not to live here, you just can't afford to live anywhere else. We have the opportunity to do that right now. They're asking everybody in town to conserve, just here tonight, within this meeting, we, we've spent money, we've given raises, we talked about future raises, we talked about, you know, upping people, we've talked about buying new things, now we're talking about a utility rate that we can't afford to decrease, because we can't afford to operate the system. So why is the city not honing in on more conservation to give those same incentives, those same reduction in cost, those same reasons for locating and staying here as we're doing for the large industrial customers? That's all I'm saying.
Okay, can I, can I address that?
Absolutely.
Number one, we aggressively went after, uh, these industrials. And I got news for anybody out there, if you don't think you, you're going to get these guys without offering them tax incentives and also negotiate rates with them that are competitive, guess what? You're right, you're going to down the vine, you're not going to get them. We are doing that, so we, let me finish, Destiny, please, I don't overtalk you, don't overtalk me. Look, we went out there, we were very aggressive on getting these businesses, and they're here, and like Ms. Urina was alluding to, once these businesses get established and we receive, start receiving those incomes that those businesses are going to give, and Ms. Doray, I disagree, you do have an incentive, because those people, those three hundred jobs at Denham and those twenty-five, thirty's going to be at Sauer, are going to buy insurance, they're going to be new, they're going to be people with money in their pocket that's going to start spending money in our town, eating out at our restaurants, spending money and spending money getting tax-based off of that, and also going to be, our customers are going to buy houses, going to rent houses, and it's going to be a, it's going, that's how you start. And if, and once we do get those, and I promise you, and I promise the people out there, when these things start taking hold, we will address this every year, look at what we can do to give it back to the people. And what, and we're still having all these things, we're aggressive on getting the things, we have turned this town around, everybody working hard together to get these things in here, and it hasn't been easy, it's been very difficult. We going in two and a half years in our administrations, and we have got, we took an empty fruit of the loom building, we've got a company there that's full of equipment waiting to be, provide three hundred jobs. We got a failed other business out there that's going big guns, spending their own money to provide a wonderful thing that's going to be a, uh, a great thing for our, our whole country, actually, and the whole world, offering green energy. And we've done these things, it's going to take time now for those things to get up and going, and then we're going to give that back to the people. So you've got to do those things if you're going to do that, because you know what? They don't have to do business with Vidalia to get their power, they could have went to Energy and do that. You want to let Energy make the money?
Let me, let me, let me say again that I said, we have to do those things. I'm not arguing with the point, I'm not arguing with the businesses locating here.
But let me-
What my statement was is that we have to give-
I wasn't through, I wasn't through with the story, I wasn't through.
No, I know, but you're insinuating that I was saying we shouldn't do that for the industry, and I'm going to make that point very clear, I never said that.
Heather.
Well, I was going to say, Ms. Thad, I mean, I didn't hear ours bring, say that she is, you know, in agreement that, um, these, you know, reduced rates will be what we need to recruit industry to town, I did hear that. And I think the question is, why can we not also offer these reduced rates to commercial and residential?
Yes.
In addition to the industrial, which I cannot answer, that would, I think, need to go to Mr. Nalan about, you know, why that would not be profitable to the town to offer those reduced rates to a residential or commercial consumer that's not consuming as much energy, and why, why it's profitable for an industrial client because of the amount of usage that they are using, or their consumption versus the commercial residential.
Of course, the more you use, the more profit we get. I, I under, I understand that. What the, what the issue is, again, we're hearing, residents, you need to wait a minute, just wait a minute, hold tight with us. The percentage rate is going up for the hydro, we're going to get some, you know, industry in, we're going to start making money, hold tight. Again, we're put on pause. Again, we're told to wait a minute. That's my point. I, I have no issue, and I, I have absolutely no ideals of grandeur that the residents should, should pay what these industrial customers pay, because it's the bulk system, it's just like she said, going to Sam's and buying your toilet paper in, in bulk, it's, that's, that's easily understood. But why is it that the townspeople still have not gotten an adequate break? That's what the point is. When, when Raymond asked the question, is that enough? Absolutely not, that's not enough. We've got to fill the houses. Your houses are moving. I just, I just completed a transaction on a house where we have a net loss as a result. I bought one, the guy moved out of town, somebody from Vidalia bought mine. We, that was a net loss in residence in Vidalia, four people moved out. So, houses are moving, but that doesn't mean that it's filling up, and that's what we need to do. We've got to attract those houses to fill up. When the houses start selling and it becomes a, a, you know, seller's market, the, the cost is going to go up, everything is going to improve.
And, and if I may add, with the, the new industrial clients that are coming online, uh, based on the project, projections that we've done, uh, the profit to the town is significant, that will ultimately allow the town the ability to take those profits and those additional revenues and spread that cost across all of their customers, that's the intent.
Yep.
And it's a stable, you know, as Heather said, they're running twenty-four-seven, so, you know, you're, everything's stabilized, that's what you're going to get. Um, so that's the whole intent, and that is why you incentivize, is because they are going to provide that additional revenue back to the town, so you can make improvements to your system without passing the cost along to your other customers, or, again, ultimately lowering the cost for everybody. So, that's the justification on the industrial side.
And I, I think what, what Rick, to Rick's point, is when he's saying that, when he had to have his people, he had that seven-hundred-thousand dollars, and they would want to know, why didn't you spend it? He's saying, well, I, I've got bills coming up this first quarter, I'm not going to have revenues for it to pay for. So, that's some of the things that we're doing right now. We've got things we're going to have to pay for coming up, we've got, we've got three, now four sewer issues, uh, projects that's going to cost, uh, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars to fix, that's things that are going to be, need to be done. We might be fixing a, uh, fight a flood, you know, you've got to have monies available, you can't just go ahead and keep living close to the vest, you've got to be able to have enough revenues to make sure your town stays what it is. And as we, and the plan has been for us to get these things in place and moving, and now we're almost there, and once they get up and going, we will address. And still, we are competitive with the alternative to what we have as far as, with the people around us, we are competitive or better than the other providers in electric service. And here's the big ki, here's the big kicker, Energy, Concordia Electric, and all these other guys, they provide a point-to-point product, and they provide you power, okay? You have an outage, they'll send people out to come fix it. Guess what? What if you had, and they're charging equal or more than what we're charging, what if you went to Energy or Concordia Electric and said, hey, guys, you also going to have to provide police protection to your citizens, you're going to have to provide fire protection to your citizens, you're going to have to provide help, these ballparks for your community and your kids to have, you're going to have to also, uh, you know, what can you charge, what were you charged per month now to do all those things? Vidalia's doing that and doing it better. And not only that, we providing the best electric service that any of these guys anywhere. So, as we get these businesses on track, I will vow to the people, because it's been only two and a half years, we, we have taken a bad situation, and it's looking wonderful. Give us a little more time to get these businesses up and going, and I, and we're going, we're going to address these things. We are going to address these rates and go back down. Rick?
Mayor, I said I wasn't going to say anything, I, I lied, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I think you're exactly right, you and this council and the people here have, in two years, have done a remarkable job. I would just like to point out that this is not your last bite at the apple. Within three months, you're going to have a budget developed for your next fiscal year. And over this next three months, these other things, and, and your point's well-taken, why doesn't the little guy, the little business guy get an incentive? I think it's a great idea, I think it should be explored. But I think, I, I would hope that you would not overlook the fact that you're operating under a budget right now, that's linked, joined at the hip with the rates that, that's being proposed in this ordinance. And, and, and you really kind of need to move forward on that one, in my opinion, with all due respect. And if you want to come back and change it, amend it, or have a new ordinance this summer to incorporate some of these new changes, which you really need to look at, you don't want to do it on the fly, you know? Just throwing darts at the wall, and I know you didn't mean that, in, in any event, then, then that's fine. Do it, take a look at it, and, and see where it goes. But I would encourage you to, uh, adopt the ordinance, I don't live in Vidalia, so I'm telling you from, I think, really an objective standpoint, to go ahead and adopt the ordinance, you've, you've adopted your budget, let's adopt a rate ordinance that, that fits hand and glove with the ordinance, and then, then look beyond that to what else you can do.
The, um-
Destiny's had her hand up a while, haven't you?
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple things to say. First of all, um, I think what Sabrina is trying to articulate is that people and small businesses should be the stabilizing factor in our town. And I think with what she's asking for, to explore some breaks for businesses, I mean, like the guy that was here earlier, um, you know, we want people, we want these small businesses, these are the livelihood of our town. And when people are looking to relocate, I hear a lot of talk about services, services, Vidalia provides the best services, you do, you have wonderful employees, I don't think I've ever had a bad experience with any employee here in Vidalia. I'm not saying a lot, because you know, you run into them a lot when you've lived here a long time, they're great guys. But people who are relocating here aren't necessarily looking for good services, they're looking for good schools, they're looking for parks to take their children to, of which we have none. And we can't go to the playgrounds because of insurance reasons. So those are locked up, the kids can't play with that, can't play on those playgrounds. They're looking for, um, lower utilities, they're looking for places that are not polluted, that are not, you know, seven to eight hundred times the rates of cancer like they are in St. James Parish. You know, these are the types of things that people are looking for when they are moving, relocating. And as much as you say that industry is going to bring people here, they're going to eat in our restaurants, they're going to, you know, buy our houses, that's speculation, because what we have across the river is a sister city. And a lot of people that are going to come here are going to go to Natchez, they're going to eat in Natchez, they're going to shop in Natchez, they're going to buy houses in Natchez. And that's just the fact of, of, you know, what could likely happen. So, I want, I just want to make sure, you know, that we are giving our citizens as much priority as we're giving these big industries. And you talk about ITEP, but the state of Louisiana is known for giving these massive ITEP, these industrial tax exemptions for anyone who doesn't know what that means, but other states don't do that. And there's a large trend right now, just in Baton Rouge, Exxon was denied a new ITEP exemption. And you know what they're going to do with their responses to that? They're sending lobbyists to try to do away with the law that allows local governments to rule on how much of an ITEP an industry gets. I would like to encourage everybody here, if you haven't, to look up Together Louisiana and see what they're saying, look at the data that they're bringing forward with these ITEP exemptions. If we all just stop giving them, the industries won't stop coming here. I mean, we have prime location on the river. They need us just as much as we need them. And with the relaxed environmental laws in Louisiana, they're going to continue to come to Louisiana. So that's what I want to say about ITEP, and that's what I want to say about, um, you know, just speculating that everybody, all these industries that are coming in are going to live in Vidalia, we need to develop places for shopping, for eating, so that people do want to live here. I mean, we need to have parks for our kids, we need to have low utility rates, because our small businesses and our people are the backbone of this town. And we want to see it grow.
Okay, thank you. We get it, right? Okay, thank you. We get it. Right.
My name is Larkin Simpson. I am the Vice President for Major Employers for the Central Louisiana Economic Development Alliance. I'm the regional representative for the Regional EDO here in central Louisiana. My territory goes all the way from Vidalia to, uh, Leesville and Vernon Parish, from Naugus down to Allen Parish. I am the economic developer, um, for our region that recruits these major industries. To say that other states don't give ITEP is wrong.
No, I said not as big as Louisiana. They don't give as massive an ITEP.
That's still not true. That's still not true. Every state gives it. They call it different things. They do it at different percentages. I'm not here to talk about ITEP. We can do that. I can stay here till two in the morning. If y'all wanna do that, we can do that. But I'm not here to do that. You can collate to it, but no. One of the things that happened with Exxon and, um, East Baton Rouge Parish, hours after they made that decision, Corpus Christi announced that they were making that same expansion in Corpus Christi because they had the, um, the exemption over there that they could do. I'm not telling you guys what to do. I think y'all are having a great discussion about where to go. I think you're exactly right. I have one point I wanna make to you, but, um, don't shoot yourself in the foot by not publishing competitive rates. You guys have great rates. You guys have something that other communities in our 10 parish region don't have. You're exactly right, Mayor. If a company comes here and they don't agree with your rates, they can go to Energy or the Co-op or whoever and get a more competitive rate if they choose to do so. Y'all want them a part of your system. Y'all want them working with you. To your point, I would say the reason why you can't give incentives or investments to small businesses is because they can't guarantee their jobs, they can't guarantee their load factor. That's the things that we base an, uh, utility rate on. And so that's the problem. If you could get to that, you know, if you could get a rate small enough where they could do that, that would be great. But, um, I would just continue to tell you guys, I've, I've looked at your rates. I think they're competitive. I think they're good. I think that you're gonna have attraction more like what we have, uh, have had the last year or so. Louisiana's getting hit hard over ITEP. I just lost a, a company, uh, coming out of Columbia because they wouldn't come to the US, they wouldn't come to Louisiana because of uncertainty. The political climate in Columbia was more certain than the political climate in Louisiana. Figured that one out. But it was all because the company couldn't put into their rates and their, their taxes how they were gonna do their model. These guys do their projections, just like you guys did your budget projections. They do their projections for their companies, you know, 10, 15, 20 years out. If they can't tell relatively what those numbers are gonna be, they'll go to a different state where they can. Right now, I work with companies all the time that have to produce, uh, product in the Gulf South. They don't have to be in Louisiana. They can be in Texas, they can be in Alabama, they can be in Georgia. Since I came from Mississippi, I try to steer them away from there, but we want them in Louisiana. If you have your rates published, they can kinda put, could, uh, pin the paper about what their rates are gonna be. If they don't know what that's gonna be and they can, they can't put a number in a, in a spreadsheet, they'll skip over Louisiana, they'll skip over Vidalia every time. I see it every day. Thank y'all.
And again, we, we spent quite a long time talking about industrial. Today, we've got to talk about residential and commercial. So one of the things that I have a question about, on the static factor, you've got it listed at 5.278. What would happen, or what would be, you know, what would be the detriment if we changed that to six? Which would, it's kinda like an insurance deductible, as I understand it. The higher your deductible, the lower your premium. So the higher your static factor, the lower your electric rate. Is that right?
The higher your static factor, the lower your power cost adjustment.
So what if, I mean, you know, that number was chosen 5.278 without any, you know, without any discussion from the board? So what if the board now discusses changing that static factor? And we put within this ordinance that, that we revisit this at least quarterly. That way, we have financials, which, you know, are about 30 days, um, takes about 30 days to create. We can watch this on a quarterly basis, based on the static factor, and we can make adjustments. Because what I fear is that if we pass this as is, the only way to get it back on the agenda is if you put it on there.
And I said, and I said we would. We'll monitor. I said exactly what I said that we would do. I mean-
Right, so how often, under your plan, would it come back on the agenda?
For this next budget year, we will address it again. And this is one of the things I wanna do, and like Rick keeps alluding to y'all. This is, these things go hand in hand with our current budget. We've only got a few months left on this current budget. A lot's gonna happen within these next few months as far as the, these businesses getting up and going. We, we get it in, and I put it, yes, we will discuss it. I mean, we will, and that, we, it puts it back in y'all's hands. If we don't adopt this budget, ordinance now, we can't change what we got that's presented. It's in the, uh, it's in the oper, it's in the operating, uh, budget ordinance, and it's not a capital spending budget, and it's not a code, uh, code budget. So you can't, you can't change this ordinance as it's written. Yeah, go, go ahead.
Mayor, I think I may have, uh, an answer to your question.
Okay.
If you increase your static factor from .05278 to .06, and you sell, but people consume approximately 90 million kilowatt hours during the year, the drop in revenue to the city would be $649,800. So roughly $650,000 in additional cuts you'd need to make to the budget somewhere.
Based on an annual basis?
On an annual basis.
Right.
$650,000.
But if it didn't happen until March and, and the end of our fiscal years in June?
Okay, a third of the year would be $217,000.
$217,000.
But then it'd be $650,000 the following year.
That's right. But if we revisit that in June and we see, mm, can't survive on that, we can revisit it. We have to do an amended budget anyway. We have to do one every year.
It's a matter, it's a, it's a matter to, what is your, talk about, what is your version of risk?
Mm-hmm.
If you're willing to, 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 to increase it to .06, so I'm willing to take the risk and we're gonna run short of cash, then you may wanna do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would, I would suggest with this new, uh, with these new rates, you might wanna get a few more months track, uh, history behind you and look at it, trying to coordinate your new rates if you wanna change the rates with the new fiscal year.
But these rates have, these electric rates have been in existence since August. So we've got some history behind us, letting us know where we stand based, based on when these were, were put into effect.
It comes down to what you're comfortable with.
I'm comfortable with people not moving out of Vidalia. I'm comfortable with businesses being able to hire new employees. I'm comfortable with finally giving the people of Vidalia something they were promised a long time ago. That's what I'm comfortable with. I'm comfortable with, instead of the town telling the people to conserve, that the town conserves. That's what I'm comfortable with. If it means that we have to reduce by $240,000 within the town so that the people will stay here and can live comfortably here, I'm okay with that.
That's, you know, your point, I, I, I understand your point, okay? But it's, again, it's, it's a matter of, of, uh, of how you wanna budget the situation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The, it sounds like nothing has been done to help residential and small commercial. Those reductions, the 1.4 million, has already, has already taken place. So you're talking about something in addition to the 1.4, and I think it's worth looking at. I'm just suggesting, well, it's up to the mayor, to the council, y'all here. Y'all, y'all will make that decision.
Well, based on this, this spirited conversation back and forth, uh, here's what I hear about the ordinance. It, it will force us as a unit to make sure that we're all in, up to speed and in touch with what's going on in case there needs to be some changes. Now, we, this, this ordinance, it is what it is, the way it's written. But there may come to, there may come a time we have to address it, change it. Uh, with, there are several, several issues we're getting ready to face that I don't know whether we're ready for or not. But having to work as a team, th, this is gonna force us to have to work as a team. It's gonna force us to have to have a conversation about the next quarter. I like the idea of the, the quarterly. And if, if Alderman Dorey is asking for some, a concession that we do meet and discuss this, uh, quarterly, with, without adding the verbiage to the ordinance, can we have a gentleman's agreement, uh, an agreement throughout the board that we do discuss this?
I, I have no problem with that.
Okay, let's, let's roll then. Let's vote.
Well, this is one thing I wanna say, this is what I'd like to say too on a whole deal. He said we'll discuss it, but we've also discussed things that you've also made very plain. We'll discuss it, but we won't vote on it. So we're gonna vote on it also, right?
If it warrants that, if it warrants-
But who decides if it warrants?
Who decides whether a vote is warranted? Because there's other things that we've asked to put on the agenda that never were put on there, that we could vote on, but we couldn't get them because we only got, we were gonna discuss them, but we couldn't vote on. So tell me that.
I will be glad to answer that ultimate approach because those things that have been asked for to be put on the ordinance, I was never brought what that ordinance had. What it was, it-
You know what it has. It's got your salary on it.
But, okay, it's got my-
Plain. That's pretty simple.
Okay, okay, it has my salary on it. Who, okay, it has my salary. What, what, how much? I mean, where you come up with your figures? How, I mean, how you come to that?
It's really not your salary. It's the mayor of Vidalia's salary.
Okay, alright.
Put it not in, in context, just like we didn't, we put it in the mayor of Vidalia's salary.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, but there's certain things we ask for, but we don't get to, even get to put it on the agenda. So that's my point. Are we gonna be able to vote on this also?
We're gonna vote on this here hopefully because maybe we-
I make a motion with close vote here.
Motion made by Alvin Betts, public hearing.
I second.
Second by Alvin McCoy, on a favor.
Alright.
Okay, we'll go straight to the vote. We do this by roll call. The board consideration of an ordinance establishing adopted electric rates, power, gas, water, sewer, and garbage rates for the town of Vidalia, and repealing all previous adopted ordinances dealing with said rates.
I make a motion with-
Motion made by Alvin Betts, we adopt. Did I hear second?
I second.
Second by Alvin McCoy, and we'll take a vote by roll call.
Ordinance hasn't been read. Motion before the board. Alvin Betts?
Yes.
Alvin Dorey?
No.
Alvin Gardner?
Four.
Alvin McCoy?
Yes.
Alvin Probst?
Four.
Yeah, either four, now either one. Motion passed.
Okay.
Alright, do I hear motion with adjournment?
No, alright, before we- Let the minutes reflect, let the minutes reflect that that was a, a spirited conversation about revisiting this issue at least quarterly.
Absolutely.
And if it warrants being put on the agenda and voting for the change of the ordinance and amending of the ordinance, that we do so. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion second. Second, on a favor?
Aye.